Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statute, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Services Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, December 1st at 2014 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room, the Teacher Administration Center, 3215 Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administration Building during working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statute, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the Board Meeting Room Wall on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scout Troop 45402.
Our world allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Here.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Present.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas. Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
A. Present.
I undertake a motion to excuse Mr. Vargas. He had a work emergency that he could not be here today. If no motion is made, we'll move forward.
I move to excuse Mr. Vargas.
So motion by Ms. Gadding is there or second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Underwood. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas. Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
A. Present.
I undertake a motion to excuse Mr. Vargas. He had a work emergency that he could not be here today. If no motion is made, we'll move forward.
I move to excuse Mr. Vargas.
So motion by Ms. Gadding is there or second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Underwood. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
A. Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to school spotlight, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, Board. We are very pleased to have a very special guest with us this evening from Burke. Athletic Director Kai Rorig will introduce her to us now. Sir, if you'd approach.
Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to welcome Mia Station to the Board Meeting tonight, Burke High sophomore. Mia's been golfing since before she went to Wakanda Elementary, and she finished as the Metro Champion two strokes under, or won by two strokes, I'm sorry, and then won the state championship by 11 strokes in Class A Girls Golf. With her tonight is her father, Mr. Larry Station, her coach, Coach Larry Seitz, and Burke Building Principal, Dr. Deborah Freysen. Mia?
Hello. I just want to give recognition to my coaches, my principal, my athletic director, and my father definitely for helping me to achieve what I've done, and I hope to do a lot more in the future.
Moving on to F., Board and Superintendent Communications, Treasury Report.
Mr. President, Board Members, the Board Financial Reports for the month of October are included in your reports.
Thank you. Superintendent, report, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Wayne. A couple of items. First, I'm going to hand out these AQUEST draft documents to the Board. This is a program that the State of Nebraska is looking at for a shift in assessments. Part of the reasons they're looking at this, and we'll hear more about this actually at the NASB, I believe they've got a presentation at the NASB Conference that happens on Thursday and Friday. I know several of our Board members are involved in that. This is part of what NASNDE is doing in relationship to a potential waiver request. And so I wanted just to let you know, it's a draft, it's not definitive yet, but the State of Nebraska is definitively looking at a waiver request from NCLB, which would have multiple implications should that come to fruition. One of the interesting dynamics that they're looking at, which would impact us and probably be a big part of some conversations next year, is they may include some teacher evaluation with student achievement data attached to it, which would require us obviously then to be on top of that, which is something we're going to have to work on anyway. So I wanted to start off with that, and again, I mentioned the NASB report, it's Thursday and Friday. Also, a big congratulations to North High Vikings, they won on Friday, 48 to 14. They'll be playing on the 24th for the state title against Creighton Prep at Memorial Stadium. And just a note, I know we're going to talk more about it later, we had a great meeting with our Commissioner of Education, Matt Bloomstead today, and all of his staff, his head staff, and I think we've made some progress on CEP, and we're going to be talking about that. Nothing is set in stone, but we've set some of the parameters together, so I appreciate Matt Bloomstead and staff working together today to come up with some potential answers. So with that, I'll end the report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Board Member reports. Mrs. Gadding.
I have a couple, several shout-outs that I want to do to some of our students. A week and a half ago, Bryan High hosted the middle school quiz bowl competition and also a couple of pieces of Acadaca, and just had incredible comments from parents who were there on the quality of our students and how well they ran that program. And also just want to compliment the staff there for the incredible job they did of running the program. And then Central High School hosted a math competition for middle school students last week, and again, just heard amazing things from parents who were standing around saying, wow, these kids are really energetic and they're so enthused about math. This is really different, and so that was a good thing to hear. And then on Saturday night, our Benson High School ROTC students were part of the Children's Hospital Gala, and they were there assisting and just really did a great job of selling raffle tickets and everything else, and got wonderful compliments back on them as well. So I just want to say thank you to those high school students who were great ambassadors for OPS in various functions in the past week and a half.
Thank you. Any other? Ms. Williams.
Well, I have quite a few actually shout-outs and thank-yous to give out today, but first, since everybody's looking at this, have to talk about, alright, this is the greatest logo ever, so it's the Women in the Trades Middle School and High School Career Fair that was hosted last month by OPPD, Black Hills Corporation, let me read this, Metro Community College, Center for Energy Workforce Development, QWIT, Lincoln Electric System, NPPD, Regal Awards, Artifacts, Frontier Bag Company. So I had the opportunity to go out to OPPD Elkhorn Station in late October with a group of about 80 girls. It was technically a sold-out crowd. We were talking about women and girls in the trades, and so every girl, I promised one of the VPs that I would actually wear their gear for them today. But every one of our girls got a pink construction hat and some pink safety goggles, and then this great bag, lots of great, okay, there's my shot, I'm dead. Lots of great information about trades. There was some great testimonials from women who were in trade classes right now at Metro. It was a full-day seminar, and we're looking forward to partnering with them again. We had some OPS students there, and we're looking for doubling it next year and promoting it with the middle schools and high schools. It was just a great opportunity to talk about different things. We talked about what does it take to work at OPPD and Transformers and the oil and just all of the specific things and about energy. So it was a great opportunity to share it with some young ladies, and we rocked the pink, and it was a good time. Very technical in the wordage, but really talked about how we can, at OPS, talk about strengthening trades and having women there, so I'm sure you would have enjoyed it, and maybe next year I can swing you a seat in the all-girls bus. Also, I want to give a shout-out to Central Cross Country Team. Didn't have the opportunity to report about it till now, but April, October 24th, they placed fourth at state, so I want to congratulate those girls. Yes, my daughter was one of the runners, she came in 30th place, which was a record for her, but I really want to give a shout-out to Coach Lodge and Coach Phillips. They worked really, really hard for that team. First time they placed in state, got to go to state since 2003, so that was a great opportunity, and we'll be honoring them this week. Also had the opportunity to represent OPS at the Nebraska Council of 100 Black Women at their Father-Daughter Scholarship Banquet Luncheon this past Saturday or Sunday. Really great time, they honored seven young ladies with some scholarships, a great father-daughter luncheon, hoping to have more of us there next year, but they will do that, so congratulations to them on that. And then, of course, I also want to give a shout-out to Partnership for Kids, who OPS has partnered with for a very long time, and Dr. Kerberg was there with me at the 25th Anniversary Dinner, and really showing the power of partnership in our public schools and what, you know, those partnerships look like to help young people. And I believe our numbers are phenomenal, like how many students that organization is able to work with OPS and partner and work on in a mentoring capacity. So just wanted to give those few shout-outs and hope to have some more great things coming before the end of the year.
Thank you. Any other Board Member, Communications? Seeing none, moving to public comment. Mr. Rorig, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Moving on to consent agenda items. H1 through H11. I undertake a motion to approve.
Move approval.
A motion to approve, and Mrs. Underwood.
Second.
Consent agenda item for us, Mrs. Fay, second. Roll call.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
A. Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to information items, Federal School Nutrition and Community Eligibility Program 1I1A. Mr. Evans.
I'll introduce it, President Wayne. Tammy, you may want to come up just in case there's questions that you can answer. In the meeting today with NDE and Commissioner Bloomstead, one of the pieces that we were able to identify is that many states are doing alternative forms for identification, but it looks as if we could pilot with some of our highest qualifying schools with having limited implications on our Title I resources that are distributed to other schools, which has been one of the issues of if you go with CEP, will it cause other schools then to lose Title I resources? We're going to crunch the numbers and see how many we can include in a community program with having limited impact, but Tammy, do you want to mention some of the items that we discussed today?
It was an excellent meeting we had today. We had individuals from the Nebraska Department of Education Nutrition Services in addition to the Nebraska Department of Education/Education. And a lot of the information that was tossed around was the use of an alternate form to make it easy for families to want to return those back, as it had been expressed throughout from various conversations that other people had had, is in order to want to get those back for other purposes. We talked about how the Department of Ed wants to help us. They want to use us as the pilot to help develop those forms, use our expertise and the knowledge that we will provide them because they do want one standard form. They don't want to have 465 forms floating throughout the state of Nebraska. And they, very many, many times, they said, tell us what you need from us and we will be there for you. And so right now, it's a matter of the number crunching to see where it would work the best. We have a number of schools to over 100%, and right now, it's just a matter of determining which schools we could use for the pilot, as we are going to move forward with the pilot, and that has a minimal impact on Title I schools. And plus, other information that may be needed by the district for transportation or whatever else the meal code has been used for. But it was very, very great conversation, very open, and we're ready to rock and roll.
Do any Board Members have questions related to that? Mrs.? Mr. Snow, you get to go first.
I look like Tony, thank you. Sorry. Do you have a timeline for this?
As soon as we can.
Soon as we can.
We can have the application, what we would like to do is be able to start in January.
Okay.
It's a matter of determining who the schools are and getting the application filled out and getting it approved. We have some other pieces that we'll need to work on, we'll need to have a letter that goes to the parents of those six schools informing them that they will no longer need to have a meal application if that is the only child they have in the district. If they have children in other schools, they'll still need to, you know, fill out a meal application because that's how the other children will be.
And my second question on that, so if I'm correct, we have 16 schools? How many schools qualify over 100%?
Hmm, I can't remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the...
What was the question? How many schools qualify for over 100%? I don't remember off the top of my head either on that.
Yeah.
But the challenge on the semester, like to do it at semester, if you took every school that qualified, it'd be more than four or six that we're looking at to pilot. The challenge would be, they're going to get additional Title I resources, but it will come from other schools. In other words, you've got schools that would lose Title I, it's a semester, which means they've got paras that would lose their jobs, they've got other staff, because you don't increase your Title I funding when you go to CEP. At least, that's how we were explained today with Commissioner Bloomstead and all the NDE staff. And so you've got the same pool of Title I resources, but you're increasing the distribution to the CEP schools, if that makes sense. So they want us to pilot because they too don't know how it all works. They ask us, they said, gosh, we're going to learn from you, we really want you to do this because we don't know. We've never done this, we know we're kind of putting our toe in the water, but we don't want to jump in the whole pool because it's just not where we want to go right now. We just want to put our toe in the water, we don't want to go all the way. So that's kind of where we're at today, is figuring that out in a pilot-type process.
And that's where, in taking a look at that top tier with Title I funding and some of the other areas, we need to sort through that top group that are over 100%. Because part of, I think I mentioned last time, part of the benefits of CEP in the future, okay, for the first year as stepping our toe in the water, by taking a smaller number of schools, we can work through all the processes, but those schools that are over 100%, year two, we could look at taking that extra and applying it to some of those schools that are less than 100%. So the goal is to work it out with a fewer schools, year two, take a look at who might be at the over 100% because once again, we're going to need to look at April of 2015, April 1, to see where the schools line up and see where that factor is again, because the factor can be anywhere between 1.3 and 1.6%. This year it's 1.6. So our hope is, we can develop those processes, then next year, when we crunch those numbers again, maybe we can look at work at clustering or grouping some schools and take some of those schools that are less than 100% and use those numbers.
Sorry, you just let me think of one last question.
Sure, no, that's okay.
So your initial plan is just to come up with how you're going to work with these first couple of schools?
Right.
You're not going to present on a full plan on year two, you're just going to...
Right. What we need to do is we need to develop and work through with the Department of Ed all of the forms and how we're going to make this work, because each year is going to stand on its own as far as what that number of schools where they end up being in that list. And then also, we need to see what the Department of Education in Washington uses as a multiplier.
Okay.
Okay? So like this year it's 1.6, so you get more, but next year it might be 1.4 or 1.3 or 1.6, but we can always reapply. And once you reapply, it's good for four years.
Okay.
Okay? And so right now, we need to develop those processes so that way when we expand it out, that there's no hiccups anywhere, you know, we're not affecting our families, we're not affecting the schools, we're not affecting Title I. We got the processes in place to make it smooth.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And that's what the Department of Ed recommends also.
The Nebraska Department of Ed?
Right, right.
Mrs. Fay.
Yeah, it was a great, great conversation we had today. They're very open in wanting to help us, we want to get there, it's just, now it's just crunching the numbers so we can get that benefit to our families, and then really stay on top of it the years after, to get as many schools as we can into the program. Anything else?
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to item I1B, Council of the Great City Schools Audit Status. Mr. Evans?
I'll introduce it and then defer to Dr. Turnquist. We've been working with Council of Great City Schools to look at auditing all of our operations and service. Bob Carlson, I believe is who Dr. Turnquist's been working with, and he's identifying experts from across the nation to come in and do not only a review of materials that we'll be sending to him and to his external experts, but also doing a site visit. And so that's kind of the introduction statement. Dr. Turnquist, you want to provide some of the details to what we'll get from Council of Great City Schools?
Ms. Gadding, Mr. Wayne, members of the Board, and Superintendent Evans, we're very much looking forward to this, and we feel extremely positive about the fact that staff is on board with this, in an effort to learn and to grow and to develop processes and protocols that will benefit the district over time, not only in this $421 million bond, but in an ongoing manner in the maintenance of our facilities. So let me just give you a little overview of how this will roll out. First of all, by visiting a little bit about what the objectives are. First of all, the objective is to understand the level of performance within these following parameters, documented protocols, practices, guidelines, and standards that we already have, effective use of systems for submission of work orders, established operational practices, and the reporting of work status, success in meeting the expectations of our customers that would be the schools and department needs, success in meeting the expectations of management, identifying contributions, and understanding division relationships among themselves, within the service center, and with other departments. And then to determine strategies to address the following targets, improving services through logical maintenance planning and creating continuous improvement with sustainable strategies. What the audit is not, staff must understand that this is a process that is neither judgmental nor punitive. What it is, is a wise, updating, streamlining step, overdue until now. It is an essential initiative as the district moves into the implementation of the largest bond issue in the history of the state of Nebraska, and it is to establish best practices for long-range facility maintenance. The audit is necessary as an opportunity to access in-depth knowledge of best practices and technologies. It is not an evaluation of persons. The department will implement all gained knowledge in a manner that will support day-to-day work, the inception of the work on the $421 million facilities improvement construction plan, effective continuation of bond work over the course of several years, and long-range planning for the maintenance of district facilities. The audit will include the following steps and protocols. The Council of Great City Schools provides auditors who are experienced senior-level facility managers. The anticipated timeline for the site visit is early January 2015. Prior to the site visit, there will be a review of documents on current practices, protocols, and procedures provided by the district to the auditors. The onsite review of the district's facilities operations will include interviews with staff members, observation of real-time facility operations, review of additional documents, reports, and data as required by the auditors. After the site visit, the council forwards a report that evaluates and makes recommendations to help optimize the district's facilities operations. The initial draft is provided within 10 to 14 days following the site visit for preliminary review here at the district to check for factual accuracy, and then the final report is submitted once it has been vetted by the auditing team to ensure their concurrence. I would like at this time to ask Cheryl Human from Jacobs to come forward to visit with you just a little bit about Council of Great City Schools audits in this area because she has considerable experience in that area.
Thanks, Dr. Turnquist. Tony asked me to share some of my experiences with the Council of Great City Schools. Over the course of the last two decades, I have had the pleasure of working with them in various school districts. So these audits, and they do them in all aspects of K-12 organizations, but I'm most familiar with the maintenance and operations and capital planning. They do them all over the country, they do about 20 a year, so they've done a lot of them. As Tony has said, it's executive-level staff that's either currently in positions or they're recently retired, so they're peers, they understand the organization. Sometimes they're not so favorable, there can be some critical items. I think what I've always liked about that, though, is that they always provide a solution. So it's one thing to tell an organization that they've got problems in certain areas, but they do provide solutions when they identify a problem. They also identify best practices, so they go through and will list those things that they believe your organization is doing well. In one particular district, we asked them to provide kind of two pieces of information. One was, first of all, with the dollars that were allocated for maintenance and operations, were we as efficient and effective as we should be and can be? The other piece of information is putting it in context of what should be allocated overall for maintenance and operations and capital planning based on the portfolio of property that you have. They base that information on the benchmarks that they keep up to date. So based on the square footage that you have, the number of sites that you have, the age of your facilities, they'll give you some metrics and benchmarks that you should shoot for in the big picture. So they give you, like I said, two pieces of information. First, are you doing as best you can with what you get, and then perhaps, in a lot of districts' situations, really what should the number be to make sure that you don't fall behind again on maintenance? So it helps you in the long-range planning. I think Dr. Turnquist mentioned that they do interviews with staff. They go out into the facilities as well and will talk with the end-users and see what their customer service perception is, so they'll give you that feedback as well. So it's not just the M&amp;O staff that they talk to, they'll talk to school staff and whoever else you ask them to, to give that perspective, which is very helpful, you know, are you serving your customers? Because in the end, M&amp;O is a service organization, are they serving the customers in the end? So, you know, in the end, I've had great experience with them. A couple of their audits, you know, you can kind of Google them, but the one at HISD several years ago made headlines because it was the impetus for a lot of significant change in that department. They just recently, in 2013, did one at Washoe County, which is in Reno, fairly comparable in size here to Omaha. There again, it was a headline, and it's been the impetus for change in those departments to help them become... to help them become better at what they do every day. So there's my experience.
Any questions? Ms. Williams?
Not quite sure who this is directed to, but I guess I'm curious, as we're looking at this audit from the council, and we've just had some pretty hefty undertakings as far as with our needs analysis, and was any of this included in the needs analysis? Is kind of the first part, and then the second part is, looking at this audit, I don't, off the top of my head, know too, too much about it. So just really, what is this, what does this particular audit cost the district? And how does this fit into strategic plan, which the bond kind of is a, it, it's a part of that? So how does that all fit in? So I don't know who, who could...
Well, your second question was, what was it?
The second one? I'm still on the first one.
Okay, all right, I'll go back, I'll go to the first one.
I'll think of the second one again.
Okay. What we're going to be looking at is everything that happens at the Service Center. That will be buildings and grounds, schoolhouse planning, risk and safety management, environmental, operations, which includes custodial services, and maintenance.
So, and, and I guess my question with that was, were those things not looked at in the needs analysis? Or, no?
It, we didn't have an audit in that...
Okay, but I mean, I guess I'm, if we're looking at, if I'm looking, thinking about our needs analysis that we did, I guess in my mind, it's, wouldn't that be a part of it? And what are some, those, you know, what are the areas in there?
Let me first, this is going to be much more in-depth, in looking at operations, how we do things, how we support schools and facilities.
So more day-to-day detail?
And, and you know, we do audits, nutrition services is audited every year, financials is audited, accounting, purchasing is audited every year, supply divisions audited every year. So it's, it's a healthy thing to happen to any department, and it helps you grow, it helps you develop, it helps you better use your systems, and more accurately and effectively and efficiently meet the needs, in this case, with regard to facility maintenance.
Okay, and the, just the second part is, is this, you know, is this a, I'm sure it's a service that the council does, but what's the cost to the district for this?
The cost does not exceed $35,000. That's the only dollar figure we have on it so far.
Okay, thank you.
I would add, I think that the distinction between the assessment that was done to build the capital plan is an identification of the physical deficiencies or needs of a building, whereas this audit is of the process and how services are provided to support the building. So one, one is a what, and one is a how.
Any other questions? Mrs. Underwood?
I just wanted to say that at the Council of Great City Schools Conference that Ms. Merica and I attended, I went to a breakout session that was specifically in regards to facilities, and that's where they handed out this little book that I think all, the board has copies of. And I was really impressed, not only with their expertise in buildings, but the fact that a lot of them have public school experience, and a lot of the team understands that facilities through the lens of public schools, which I think is really helpful. One thing that really made an impact with me is they were talking about preventative maintenance, and basically being proactive when it comes to facilities and maintenance, as opposed to reactive. When we get reactive about things, that's when the price goes wick, through the roof. They said that for every dollar of preventative maintenance, it saves you $4 in the ultimate cost. So this is a really smart thing to do, and it's just going to make our tax dollars go further and make the district more efficient.
Any other questions? Mrs. Fay, then?
You know, Tony, if we could get the, you provided such a great list at the beginning of your report of what the audit is and is not, if we could get copies of that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, electronically, possible.
Yes, I'll send, I'll send those to Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, will the Council of Great City Schools identify, when they're doing the audit, will they identify where efficiencies could potentially be met through outsourcing?
I think what they, and I'm going to defer to Cheryl on this, I think what they're going to do is help us build those efficiencies into our system. Because one of the things, as Ms. Underwood said, is that the, the people who will come in are experienced in K-12 education. They understand the exigencies of operating large school districts with multiple facilities. It's very different than the private sector, especially when we need to be very conscious of meeting the needs of 51,000 students and their teachers. That's very different than the private sector.
Well, but there are, there are large school districts that provide some, that have, have found efficiencies and good service in, and I don't have any particular department in mind at all, but in, in outsourcing some of those services. And I guess I would just like to know, I, I, yes, I want our internal departments to be as efficient and function as well as possible, but if we can provide good service, you know, using another company to provide that service. I guess I would just like to be presented with the, the facts. I just would like to be presented with the option that, because there, you know, there's fairly large school districts here in Omaha that are outsourcing some services.
And, and we will, we will make a point of asking for their input on that.
So is that part of typically what they do when they, Council of Great City Schools, when they do an audit, do they look at those things and say?
They provide you with a comparison on average costs, your district to other districts like size. So, you know, if you're, if you're way under, you're doing great. If you're way over the norm, and they give you information, they dig into that, they will give you options, of which one of them may be to, to research that. But they don't, I guess I've never seen in their reports where they come right out and say, you know, you'd save money if you outsourced. It's more of, here's an area where we recommend, you know, a very in-depth look, and here are some items to help you increase efficiency in your operation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Stone?
Thank you. Ms. Fay kind of struck something when she was talking about. So does the Council of Great City Schools, do they offer a service after the audit? Like, after it happens, like, well, in order to do this, you have to buy our operation system to work it?
No.
No?
They're not trying to sell us anything.
Nothing.
But they do offer a service, though. They offer KPI, their performance, key performance indicators. They, they do offer a service.
Yes, that kind of service. They, they don't offer custodial services.
No, I understand, so do we, I mean, my thing is, do we go with them on that? If, if they offer that, do we have to, excuse me, do we have to use their service? Or do we open this up for other people to come in to say, well?
There is this analysis that goes on every year, I'm going to let, Dr. Poole wants to speak to that, and I know he has great experience with it from the financial side.
The KPI system that was developed by the Council of Great City Schools was developed over about a 10-year period, and it was developed by experts from all fields that came together at different meetings, offered by the Council of Great City Schools to develop these indicators. What is a good measure that we could use nationwide to support what our urban schools are doing in their schools, and how they compare to each other? So that we as staff, board members, can look at this and see how our district compares to other great city school, school districts. So this process has been in place, and we have participated as a staff, providing them with the data that they use then for their KPI calculations, and it's made available to all Council of Great City School districts.
So in other words, it's completely for...
It's free, that's correct.
Okay.
That, I guess I just should have just said, it's, it's free, Mark. Well, if you buy their, if you buy their analysis prog, program, that's not, the KPI data is all available and free to public, to the school districts.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have an issue of having to buy that product?
No, they have...
Because they just don't want us to be kind of like, well, since we've already been with them, we might as well go ahead and buy their products?
We would not be obligated in any way to buy their product.
But would they offer their product? That's the thing.
It's available now.
I'm just saying, yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we're leaving the door open for other people, and not just going with one person that's going to do the audit, and then at the end we have to buy the product.
No, I, I think you'll find that the data that's reported will be good data for comparative purposes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a few. So this is a facilities management audit, not necessarily an entire operations audit. Like printing and publications, food services...
No, no, it's facilities, facilities management. And maintenance.
And I guess where I struggle with this is, and I've said this multiple times to people, is that there's companies that would do this for free, who come in and do this for free. We could even probably engage chamber folks and business community to do the same thing for free, even though I understand it's $35,000. But if we're going to do that, I mean, I would like to see food services, print and pub, transportation, our procurement, and even our equity among our schools. Because these are, when I Googled their audits, these are all the audits they do. But if we're going to limit it to just to a limited scope of district facilities, I feel we can get that done for free, is my personal opinion on that. So I'm just curious, how, how will this audit help us develop our master plan? In what ways are we, are we imagining this helping us develop our master plan? Master facility plan, sorry.
We're going to look at the best methodologies for maintaining our facilities over time, so that we have a, an in-depth maintenance plan that can be projected over time. And we will look at this in an effort to capitalize on the investment that the taxpayers are making in this $421 million bond.
So I guess, Mr. Evans, the question, I mean, I was thinking this was going to be an operations audit, and I thought that's what was communicated. Are we, can we do a complete operations audit? Are we going to just limit to the facilities?
I think the main thing that I thought we were hearing was the master plan. I've heard a lot of conversation about creating a master plan, and this will really help us get to that point. We can certainly come back, and you can look at privatization of other parts of the district, whether it's print and pub, food service, those are pretty, pretty big things to do. Certainly happens in districts across the, the nation, I understand that. And you're right, there are multiple groups that would want to come in here and look at all of those pieces. The question is, do we want to dive into all that right now? Or do we want to work on this while we've got so many other pieces on the plate? That's, that's a big question that I'd really like to talk with the board about and come back later with some recommendations, because there's quite a bit, quite a bit of an intensive study. It's kind of like you did here, and I'm not sure what year it was, but you made that decision with transportation. That was made how long ago, Dr. Poole?
Superintendent Evans, I don't recall when that, when that happened. We've had several staff members participate in Council of Great City Schools audits as well, going the other way. So I, I'm not sure when the transportation audit was done by the Council of Great City Schools, so I can't respond to that.
And that's not what I was meaning. I was meaning, when did we go to privatization? Because I think that's the conversation, is having a private company.
No, I, I think what I heard from Mrs. Fay was, just present both. And my, my question is, is simple, do we just, are we just going to limit it to district facilities management? Are we going to listen? Or is it going to be all of operations? Because I was under the impression it was all of operations, including physical facilities management. And so, if it's just facilities management, that's all, that's all I'm asking.
It's, it's schoolhouse planning, maintenance, facilities maintenance, operations, which is custodial services, and some things that have to do with physical security in the buildings, cameras and that sort of thing. Risk and safety management, environmental, all of those things that are housed at the Service Center.
And so my, I guess my question is, can we do a audit of our entire operations? I'm not necessarily talking about...
You mean a district operational services.
Correct.
We audit purchasing every year. We audit supply division every year. We audit nutrition.
Financial audit, or is it a operations efficiency audit?
Financial audit primarily, but, but they also look at protocols and practices when they do that. When, for example, when they audit purchasing, they come in and look at all of the practices, procedures, and protocols, so that they know what your practices are and whether you're following them. Now, the fact that financials are tied to that, and much of that is protected by the financial information system using PeopleSoft and all the safeguards in that. But they also look at the operation of purchasing and, and how that proceeds.
Okay, I was just wondering, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing, I'm going to move to I-1C. Bond update, Dr. Turnquist?
We have a presentation for you here on the status of the facility plan under the bond. And Cheryl Human will begin that, we have a PowerPoint for you.
And, and I might add to this as well. We have with us this evening, Mr. Scott Keane from Emeritus Corporation. Mr. Keane was with this district in the 2000 bond issue, and Mr. Lefter could not make it tonight because of a, a conflict that he could not get out of. We have a couple files slides in the presentation regarding the, some of the next steps as far as the actual issuance of bonds. And so Mr. Keane will make that part of the presentation.
All right, President Wayne, members of the board, Superintendent Evans, it's been a busy month, and it's not even over, right? But we wanted to give you an update of some big-picture items that we're working on. So our agenda tonight is the overall program management and oversight, talking about key components of that. Emeritus will talk about the sale of the bonds, information on that. Then covered the master schedule, bid packaging, some delivery models, and then some key things that we are working on our next steps. So with that, initially, the management and oversight of the program really is to make sure that we have checks and balances, to ensure that we're delivering on the promises made to the community. And that promises made, promises kept. Starts with, I'll say, layers of committees. You start at the highest level, that's the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Last week, I think at your special board meeting, that was approved, and I know the application or the information is out on the website. The next level is an internal oversight committee. And then kind of the day-to-day is what we call the Program Management Team, or the PMT. So a little bit about each one of those. The Citizens Oversight Committee, having a couple of members from the board, community members, key staff members, really its purpose is kind of an outside look at, on a monthly basis, what's happening and the issues, and how decisions are made addressing those issues. Again, always with the lens of what was the intent and what was the commitment to the public. So we have standard reports that we can provide on schedule and budget and scope. And those are the key things of every project that we go through. We don't go through every project, but we go through those projects that, that have questions and issues that come up. The next oversight committee is the Internal Committee, which again, will have a couple of members of the board, but it has other key department heads from OPS, as well as the Jacobs staff, so that we are going through and making sure that we are getting information from IMS, you know, the IT or finance and research, purchasing, so that we're following the processes, we're incorporating any new changes as possible. We know that things change throughout the course of a bond program. So you, you define what you have to deliver, but if there are changes, we have to identify it and talk about it. We also have to make sure that we incorporate any of the standards from each of those departments. So again, food services, all of these departments feed into, and, and they have to work together. So making sure that we have a formal process to review what we're doing and how we're doing it on a regular basis. That day-to-day team is the Program Management Team, of which we had our second meeting today. So we meet every Monday afternoon, reviewing kind of the program activities that we're working on. And then as we get farther into the program, the project issues that come up, where we can talk about them. But it's the same group of staff members and Jacobs leadership that meet and review the program on a weekly basis. So that's a very formal process to make sure that we vet the issues that come up. Now, use the terms program and project. So it, it probably bears some statement here to really clarify the difference between the two. And when you look at the committees that were established, when we're talking about the program, it's the $421 million. It's everything rolled up. And that's what the Oversight Committee, the Citizens Oversight Committee, really looks at the program. There will be times where they may talk about projects, but really it's administering the overall program, high level. They really talk... They really talk about, as we develop the program, the procedures that we're going to use, having standard contracts that are used on every project. It's developing the technical guidelines that are used, again, and given to each of the consultants as a direction to implement on the projects. It's the communication plan that goes out to all of the principals that will have work. It's an entire program, smaller disadvantaged business enterprises, that again, apply to the entire program. It's every project. When you look at the individual projects, again, graphically, you can see how they all wrap up into the program. On the individual projects, we may be selecting consultants, but it's not for a mass, it's not the entire program all at one time. It's individual projects at a time, or meeting with individual principals. One of the key items on a project level is really to take that in individual scope or those assessments that you referred to earlier, take that information and go out to the site and validate it at the site. There's a project or a bid package, as we refer to it, that's how we bid that work out.
There we go. Good evening. As Dr. Poole mentioned, my name is Scott Keane, I'm with Emeritus Investment Corp. in, in Lincoln. I apologize for Bruce's absence tonight, and I'll do my best to fill in. He had asked that I just provide a, a very general description of the process that we go through in issuing the bonds, and wanted me to emphasize that he'll be back in front of this board a number of times in the coming weeks to talk through all of this in greater detail. So this is just a high-level description of what the process will be like. As you can see from the slide, there, our activities really fall into four categories. The creation of the documents that will be used to, to, to market the bonds, a discussion of the structure and the timing of the bond issuance, as well as a rating review, and then a, a structure of the actual financing itself. The initial document drafting goes on as a process working between the bond attorneys, Baird Home, as well as Emeritus, and district staff, to create the preliminary official statement, which is the offering document that will go to potential investors, as well as the authorizing resolution, that, that is the contract that runs between the district and the eventual bondholders, as well as the legal opinion, which is the document that comes from Baird Home that actually specifies that the bonds are truly tax-exempt. The structure and timing of the issue will be, again, a topic of discussion in great detail with this board, but there will be an initial, a discussion with regards to what size of financing should be issued in, in the first series. Given that the IRS has some rules regarding how quickly bond proceeds need to be spent, it's not advantageous for the district to issue all of the bonds at one time, so there will likely be a series of bonds over time as the district needs funds. But that's part of the discussion that Bruce will be going through with you, as well as a discussion of the analysis of the potential bond term, whether these bonds be issued with a final maturity of 20 years or 25 years, which are very common for Nebraska school districts. Wrapped up in that analysis is how quickly the proceeds will be spent, how quickly the district will need to have funds to spend on these construction projects, and how that impacts the levy analysis. Obviously, as the board is going through this process over the next few years of issuing the bonds, there will need to be a fairly detailed analysis as to what you might expect in the way of, of a levy impact, so that you're using that as part of your budget process every fall. Main determinant of that levy analysis is the timing of the issuance of the debt, as well as the ultimate interest rate. So Bruce will be back here in the next few weeks, talking with you about what the current market is for tax-exempt bonds, and, and what the expectation might be for the ultimate interest rate of this first series of bonds, as well as the, the possible reinvestment rates of the bond proceeds as well, because the district is allowed to reinvest those proceeds during the period of construction. Significant part of the process of issuing the bonds is, is the receipt of ratings from Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. The district currently has ratings of AAA from Standard &amp; Poor's, AA1 from Moody's, AAA at the highest possible rating category, AA1, just one modest notch down from the highest rating category from Moody's. So it's very valuable for the district with such strong ratings to have those ratings affirmed by the rating agencies. And so we'll be going through the process of doing that. We provide them, not only the draft legal documents, but also the prior three years of audits, as well as the coming budget, and we schedule conference calls with the rating agencies to be able to walk through all of the details of the financing and give the district the opportunity to, to provide any additional information that the rating agencies might like to receive as part of this rating affirmation process. Then lastly comes the bond sale, and that's, again, there'll be more detailed discussion with regards to the timing of the first sale of bonds, whether the bonds would be sold at a, at a public sale or competitive sale, or a negotiated sale. The district has used both vehicles for selling its bonds in the past. The, the public sale is typically done through an electronic auction process now, where bidders from across the country have the ability to bid on the bonds. Through a negotiated sale, the district would work with a, a single investment bank or a group of investment banks to sell the bonds. And so there are two different processes. Again, Bruce will be spending much more time with, excuse me, with you, talking through those options. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Any questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
So getting back to the overall program and how we break it up, the win of, of that program is our program master schedule, which there was a master schedule that was published in the bond document. We've since reviewed that several different times with different staff. We've moved a few, few projects, you know, you pick one up from the back, you move it forward, you move one from the forward to the back, you have to flip them, basically so that we're keeping the overall cash flow about the same. So, you know, when Emeritus talks about the amount of bonds, a lot of that is, it's really dependent on the schedule and the anticipated cash out the door related to the schedule of the projects. How we're going to deliver it is related to, as we talk about bid packaging, how we group the work, and then the delivery model. On the day-to-day, who manages it? It's the project manager, who's that single point of contact for each of the projects. And then the what is that scope validation. So when you think about those components of the overall program and what makes it successful, the overall organization, there are many components on the individual project. If you look at the bottom half of that, the project manager is that single point of contact keeping all of the information together and driving the project, that it's the scope, budget, and schedule. But that project manager reports up to the program manager, who then reports up through district operational services, and then giving the oversight committees and you all updates, so that you're assured as we move forward that we're delivering on the commitment. So I talked about the master schedule. Like I said, we, we had the schedule, at least an initial one, that was part of the bond document. That was really a first pass. As we've gone through and continued to hone that and identify issues that might be roadblocks in delivering a project successfully, we really step back and you identify the criteria. So first of all is making sure that you're minimizing disruption. And, and that means, if you've got different types of scope at a school, while we may contract it separately, the question is, is it less disruptive to the school to do it in the same year or the same summer? Or is most of that work behind the scenes, that it doesn't necessarily matter whether you have to split them up? So you have to look at that. Of course, it's always safety of the students and staff and public at all times. So we're keeping in mind, what is a reasonable schedule to make sure that we've got the phasing correct? We prioritize the open-plan schools. Also an understanding of whether each project requires swing space, whether the work can all be done in a summer, or whether it needs to be done throughout the entire school year, therefore requiring swing space. We know that there's minimal swing space in most of these schools, so we tried to prioritize projects that would actually increase space, therefore creating swing space for the next project. So you're, you know, you're building ahead so that you can backfill and keep existing space in, in its existence. We also know that, or we try to at least minimize what we call off-site temporary schooling. I think we, we heard some feedback that, that perhaps there's a lot of parents that don't like that, so keeping that in mind where we can minimize that, we, we incorporated that into the schedule. One of the biggest items in the schedule is understanding decisions that have to be made prior to starting that project. Couple key things, our sixth grade to middle school, whether it's universal across the district, or which areas it is, we need to understand that before we start key projects, or what programs are in certain schools. The last thing you want to do is start design and select a consultant, and then have to A big schedule driver was really wanting to make sure that we identified a group of projects that we could get out of the gate right away and get completed in the summer of 2015. It's really important to utilize that first summer. So it's identifying what we call quick success projects, those that we know that you can start in November and deliver by August, or relatively close to August, you know, what work can trail on after school starts. But you don't want that first year, in, in some cases, a lot of districts do this, they consider it almost a throwaway year with respect to construction. Money's too valuable. We wanted to get out right away, so we identified a couple of projects that we knew we could get out in that first year. So I talked a little bit about, that's how we schedule it. We then took the work and you group it together, how you're going to, at least initially, package it for design and then construction, what we call bid packaging. A lot of times, we, we call it a project, or you call it a bid package. They're, they're synonymous, so you're going to hear us use them interchangeably. We group the projects or group the work in projects that we know that the market conditions in Omaha, that they can bear. Because we did the market study early, we understand what the volume of work is within this area, what it can bear. We don't want to drive prices up, but you want to get your work done quickly, so it's that balance of, how much work can you get done as quickly as possible? You'll see in some cases where we have grouped all of the scope of work at a site in one bid package. It's called vertical packaging. Then in other cases, where you group like-type work across different schools. An example of that is, a lot of times, you'll do roofs. You'll do four roofs in one bid package, so you'll get economies of scale by doing that. Or security systems. So where you can group that type of work, and it doesn't impact future work, it's called horizontal. So you'll just, you'll, you'll hear those two phrases as well. There are other areas within the program that we believe we can do some bulk purchasing that's related to hardware, which is very specific throughout the district, and you want continuity from school to school, as far as what certain lock functions are, so it makes sense to know what the entire scope is throughout the entire program, or at least a year or two years. So you'll hear us talk about bulk purchasing as well. And then, of course, looking at projects and, and understanding, especially in this first year, where we may need to purchase out, or get ahead of the game and do some long lead procurement, because if you wait until the contractor's on board, you're too late to get the actual equipment. So we may buy the equipment out in advance and then reassign it to the contractor. Now, there's many ways that you can deliver the work. So you've got it grouped, so it's designed, then it's how you contract it out. The traditional model that, that has been used for many decades, centuries, design, bid, build. You get it completely designed, 100%, then you go out and do competitive bids, and then you award that work. So recently, across the country, different model, what's called construction management at risk. It's really a blended model, where you allow construction expertise during that design process. There's also design-build. I talked about the bulk purchasing and then long lead. So the, the new model that I do want to spend a little bit of time on is the construction management at risk, CMR. What it really allows you to do, in my opinion, is to bring the best of both worlds. It's a qualifications-based selection of a general contractor during the design process. At a certain point, when the design is developed enough, they then go out and bid the direct cost of work. So you get that competitive aspect when the design is, is developed enough. But you also get the input from the construction manager during that design process. So it's really an integrated project delivery model. What that helps you do is really reduce change orders, because you're getting a lot of due diligence and site investigation during the design process. That general contractor also provides really good input on phasing that project. So for difficult projects where you may have, you know, a tight schedule, or you have an occupied site, or you have many different phases throughout a year or two years, the general contractor can offer that information early in the design, so that the documents then are developed that way. They're, again, minimizing change orders. The one aspect of CM at risk that I really love, at least from my perspective, it's very transparent. The monthly invoices, you pay exactly what was billed. So your invoices can be this big. It's an invoice for every piece of direct cost of work that was put in place and that was invoiced in that past month. You see expenses, you only pay for what was spent on that work. Whereas under the traditional model, if a contractor has a, what we call a buyout savings, the owner doesn't see that. You're going to pay the exact amount that was bid at that time. Those savings go to the contractor. Whereas under this model, the savings stay with the owner. So it's very transparent. So, back to the schedule. You'll see that this, I don't expect you to see the detail of it. I want to look at the blocks of information. For each of the projects, the yellow, basically the design phase, you can see in the middle of each one of those bars, that's where it's bid or award, that's the direct cost of work. And then the green is the actual construction, with the very dark green, the close-out process. So this schedule is sorted by start date, so you can see that there are blocks of projects. The first block, at the top, what we call our Quick Start projects, that, that work that we want to accomplish in the summer of 2015, we have already put an advertisement out to do a selection for consultants. The schedule is extremely aggressive, so we really have two processes that are going to be going on for selection of consultants. For these Quick Start projects, 10 of them, doing a combined request for qualifications and request for proposal, just for these projects. Then also having a, a general prequalification for the remainder of the bond. We have, for the Quick Start projects, being it's a combined process, we have a mandatory meeting where we meet with the consultants, we review the schedule, we can review the scope, we can talk them through the process, so that we can get consultants on as quickly as possible. Their first goal is to go out to the schools, physically look at the buildings, do that comparison with the assessment data that we had, and validate that scope. Because things change. Something may have already gotten addressed, something may have accelerated, something might actually be higher in priority, but they'll bring that information back to the project manager, back to the team. Once we get a consultant on board, we also can confirm the delivery model that we intend to use on each one of the projects. So if you think of that schedule, these Quick Start projects, that's that first top block. Those are the projects, again, that we want to start and get delivered by the start of school in 2015. So those 10 projects include technology upgrades at Lewis &amp; Clark, Mars, North &amp; Morton, fire, life, safety, and security projects, those in Area C, there were 11 schools in that area, Lewis &amp; Clark, McMillan, Monroe, Morton, and North, and then the capital improvements at Saratoga, Blackburn, and Ponca. Now, that's not how we're bid packaging them and grouping them, but that's, that's a consolidation of, if you think of the blocks of scope that were, that was approved by the voters, we tracked, you know, we reported in that, those blocks. So we'll always go back and forth between how we're delivering the work, yet how the public was used to seeing it, because those were their priorities. So that next group of projects, while people think, you know, 2016 and 2017 is a long ways off, we'll actually be selecting consultants for those projects in the next couple of months. This goes back to that prequalification process that I, that I mentioned. We'll have two parallel processes. This group of projects will select consultants using more of the traditional model, do requests for qualifications, review those, shortlist, you know, seek out and say for this project, these three or three to five consultants are invited to propose and interview on a specific project. So that's what, that's how we will select consultants for that- So that's what, that's how we will select consultants for that next group of projects. Again, it's all for work that's in 2016 and 2017, but we have to get started on the design in the next couple of months. Let's see, I think I talked about most of that. The one item I didn't talk about here is land procurement, which I know district staff is already working on. There's a couple of projects in there where the new high schools, for example, if we know we have land identified, that will dovetail into that process, where we can get a consultant on board, they can do a specific project ed spec, they can go so far until they know what land it is, because then you need to start incorporating the land. But we'll get started on at least the selection process for the high schools of the consultant, and the ed spec process for those projects, making sure that we're dovetailing the design The last group of projects, really kind of the last half of the program, as you will, as we, as I talked, when we talk with the oversight committee, any changes in schedule, if there need to be, we'll report up through the oversight committee, and then, again, in our updates to the board, we'll report that. Also, on an annual basis, we'll do an update of the schedule itself. Items that may have had to either push forward in the schedule because something has failed, or it has to push back because a decision hasn't been made. So while this is the master schedule and we track to this, we also need to be flexible enough to accommodate changes. We track those changes and report them, but we have to be flexible enough to move things So, I think later on tonight, I know there's a resolution on the construction management at risk, to allow us to use that, hopefully. If that is approved, at one of the next board meetings, either the next one or the following one, we would come back to you and provide the detailed procedures that we would propose that would be used if that model was allowed. I mentioned that we have the advertisement out for the selection of consultants on the quick start projects. I think our target, don't you remember our dates, for the award of those quick start projects consultants was right after the first of the year. We have then the prequalification for those projects that are in 2016 and 17, you would anticipate seeing that list of recommended awards. And then the next group of recommended awards would be for contractors in that prequalification process as well. That was a lot of information. I'm sure there's questions.
Any questions, Mrs. Underwood?
I have just a few questions. I was trying to remember, is communication of the bond program included in your contract? Okay, so you'll be developing a website and...
So, we'll be, actually, well, Todd is here, we're trying to get a meeting set up with Todd Andrews, so that we can develop a communications plan. Where we identify all the different audiences, and then, how do we want to make sure that we communicate with those audiences? You know, is it updating the district's webpage right now? Because the advertisement that I mentioned for the consultants for the quick start right now, that was published under the bond information on the district webpage. So, you know, we, I talked to how many consultants today, walked them through, you know, open up the district's webpage, under the bond information, scroll all the way down. That was an interim measure, but we'll develop a plan that details where all the information goes on the website, or when we want to do press releases, what events trigger press releases, or how do we communicate with parents of a specific school? Is it, you know, the old method was, literally, in the Friday folder, every piece of, you know, there was a piece of paper that went in every student's, you're smiling, you remember the Friday folder, right? Well, a lot of that has gone by the wayside, right? So is it each individual school sends electronic updates? Just understanding, how do we communicate with each of the individual audiences? Because they're all different.
Okay, great, thank you. I think that's all I have at this point, actually. Thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Williams?
So I'm looking at this, well, you know, I'm a schedule nut, so, can we get a good copy of this program's, the master schedule? And then, I guess what I'm asking, maybe it's for staff, is can we, as changes come up, can we just get the information to us as soon as you know, maybe can we know? I mean, I really want to, because I know I'm having, I'm being flooded with questions about what's happening when, and I don't have a response. And so, it would be nice for us to have that information as soon as possible, always updated, just so that we're communicating the same thing. Because the worst thing to say is, well, I don't know, and we should know, and then we're looking to find answers. So I don't know if that's Mr. Ray, or whom that is, but...
And so what we can do is definitely give you a copy of that schedule. Over the next couple of weeks, when we put that information into the actual scheduling software, we then can code it, so it can be sorted a couple of different ways, whether it's sorted by school or by your area, so that, you know, you can have a report that's the school's in your area, and you can quickly look at it, and then the school's in all of them. So there's a lot of different ways we can sort that information, so it's easier to find that. But that'll come once we officially put this into the scheduling software, which will be a couple of weeks out, but we can definitely give you this right now and send that.
That would at least be a start, so we can at least have some great, informed conversations.
Yeah, Mr. Snow?
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. This might not be directed at you, it's probably more directed at the board, but me personally, I think that I would like small emergency, emerging businesses to get some of these contracts. So, for the board, do you think we should have that in policy for Jacobs? I don't know.
So, let's kind of follow up, because I have the same question, kind of similar to you. Is this construction management at risk? Is this just for the bond, or is this going to be for all of our policies going forward? And then, integrated into that question, how are we going to do small emergency, small and emerging businesses, minority businesses, veteran owned businesses? How are we going to merge that into, one, our overall policy, and then, is that different from what's going on with the bond? And why?
So, we actually have a meeting tomorrow morning at nine, to talk about what would be the goal, and I will say, specific to the bond, and how can we develop and implement a program that is outreach? You know, first you start with communication and outreach, and then identifying the business enterprises that fit into that, and making sure that they really can meet their requirements, and what do we need to do to help them? And then, tracking and reporting on that. So our first meeting tomorrow is really to talk about the development of a program that we then would bring back to you, as a, you know, here's a plan that we believe could be implemented as part of the bond program. So that's the first half of your question. I'll let someone else answer the second half.
Dr. Turnquist?
Yes, Mr. Wayne, this is a high priority for us, and we want to hit the ground running with it, which is why we're having that first meeting tomorrow, to develop a plan that is actually woven into the process of the bond, but also will be woven into our processes over time, so that it's not a patch we wear on our sleeve. It's something we're going to do, because it's good for the community, it's good for the economy, and it's the right thing to do.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Snow, are you done? Sorry.
I might, I'll let Ms. Williams go, but I was just trying to figure out, I don't know what construction projects, but, I don't know, I understand we have a plan, and that's great, but just for a little bit more accountability for the board, to let us know at ease that it is in policy, knowing that we are doing it. I don't know what projects does that usually happen? I don't want to put you on the spot, Ms. Underwood, but organizations putting things in policy when they're doing construction or anything, but...
I don't know about our specific policy, but we see that a lot in public jobs. The small and minority-owned businesses are almost always a part of public projects, so...
Organizations kind of like put that in policy, so they know that it's happening? Or...
I couldn't comment on other organizations, I'm not sure.
Can I have Matt just follow up, because he's in the industry, too?
Yeah, but, like, state, Nebraska Department of Roads, Iowa Department of Transportation, what they'll do is, on certain contracts, they'll have a percentage requirement that the general contractor has to have commitments from subcontractors, that they meet a certain percent of the overall total, of their overall total bid package. So they might have to have 5% be DBEs, or they can gain, if they have, say, 6% and they're maybe $1,000 low, that might be able to bump them up into winning the contracts. Just depends on how it's written.
Okay.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank Dr. Turnquist and Cheryl, because I know I've harped on you both about my personal feelings about the minority and women-owned businesses, hence my pink hard hat earlier, very pro-women business. But I do, I thank you both for keeping that in mind as we're going through this process, and you both know as well as we do that, if our community sees our community doing the work, then it really builds not just the systems that we're creating, but it also builds the community as well. And I know very much that they are wanting to be a part of the process, and so, again, I know that is on both your radars, and I ask about it a lot, but I thank you for that, because that's important for our public to know as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Fay?
So, I'm trying to grasp all of this and make sure I understand this, but in particular, looking at that action item for later in this meeting, that relates to the construction management at risk. And I want to make sure I understand, before I vote on the resolution, it's a part of You went through the benefits of it, what you see as the pros. I want to make sure I understand what the other models are, and maybe what some of the downsides of doing it this way are?
Great question, because I would never recommend that you use construction management at risk for all the projects. It's really, you look at each project and understand the risk of that project. Is the risk in the scope, the schedule, the budget? And depending on that, you identify a delivery model. So, I mean, here's an example. Your replacement schools, to build a replacement school, while you have a school on site, and it might be tight, if you can set up a really good barrier, the replacement schools are really a good candidate for the traditional model. You know, you pre-qualify your general contractors, you make sure that those GCs that are going to bid have the capacity to do the work, but you don't have a lot of unknown conditions, right? You don't have, you don't have stuff behind existing walls, you know exactly what you have. So you can get the best bang for your buck, so to speak, on bid day, because you've got the most responsive qualified bid, and it's the lowest price. You've been able to do your due diligence on the documents, because you're starting with a, you know, a flat piece of ground, in theory. So you can make sure that you can really go through the documents and do a constructibility review, where you're comparing trade work between different drawings, that you don't have disconnects. Whereas on a remodel, where you have a lot of, you know, you may have asbestos to deal with, you don't know what's behind the wall, you don't know what system may or may not have been taken out or put in, so you can only do so much due diligence. Those types of projects really warrant the construction management at risk. So there's not a, it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's dependent on each individual project, and the comfort level of the design team. So we need to talk about that with the design teams. I'll give you an example, probably a decade already. I had a very difficult phased replacement high school. We selected the design team, and as we progressed through the concept, district staff, we really believed that we needed to go with construction management at risk to deliver the project successfully. Brought the consultant in and said, this is what we wanted to do, and they were taken aback, and they went, we can't do that. We thought we were really doing the project, you know, the right thing for the project. The consultant was very uncomfortable with that delivery model. They were very much used to the old delivery model, design, bid, build, that's all they had done. So...
So what made them uncomfortable? Why were they uncomfortable? I mean, this is all new terminology to me, so I, yeah.
It's having another party at the table at certain times, and it's change. Whereas under the traditional model, the architect and engineer are the only people on a project throughout that entire design process. Whereas in the construction management at risk, the site superintendent and the project manager for that construction management will be looking at the documents throughout the entire design period and going out to the site. And sometimes that change in having someone else be part of that process is uncomfortable, and it was for them. So, you know, initially, it started out with, we believe it was the right thing to do, but it made the architect and engineering team very nervous. Now, at the very end, it worked out for the best, but it took the entire process to convince that architect that was literally the better model. But there are other times where it doesn't, you know, you don't gain anything by bringing it on, because you can define the project, either the schedule or the scope, clear enough, because it's not as complicated. Does that help?
Any other questions?
Yes, my two cents is, when we get to the later action items, just so everybody knows, I'm going to move the table, both the contract and the other thing, because of what we just all heard here. To me, I think getting this and uploading it today did not really give the public the opportunity to reach out to their board members. We have a lot of people, particularly in my district, who are in construction, who give me feedback on things that I would like to vet some of this through. With all this new terminology, I don't, I'm not a construction expert, so I'm going to say, let's wait until the process is in place. I agree with Mr. Snow and Ms. Williams, I've heard you speak many times about the small emerging and minority businesses, and while I think it's a lofty goal to meet tomorrow, I think before we start signing contracts and moving down this path, everything we do today will limit a choice we make in the future. That contract is specific. Not saying Jacobs would do this, but after we vote on a contract, and we pass a policy later down, saying we want X, Y, and Z as far as small and minority and emerging businesses, I would say that wasn't defined in the contract, and it's going to require more work for me, going out and finding more people. I just think overall, there has to be a overall structure in place before we move down this. We have one shot at this. We have really one shot. And until the entire structure's in place, for example, questions that need to be answered for me is, in our needs analysis, there was a huge thing in the community, which was number two, about equity. Equity throughout our resource, throughout our district. And this board hasn't defined what facilities, equity in facilities look like. Is every middle school going to have a STEM lab? Is every other middle school going to have one? Every high school have a new science lab? What does, what are those benchmarks? What is that structure? What is the end of this bond going to look like? And I think that's important for transparency, that before we start any more down the process, we understand what those standards are, as far as how are we going to address the number two issue, which was equity. I think we are, but I can't tell you what that looks like. I can't tell you what the model school looks like. I can't tell you if, what Norris has done, how similar it'll be to Davis Middle School, which is our new school. And those are some of the questions that I need to answer, and primarily, because I just got the PowerPoint today, I feel like we haven't had a full conversation of, how are we going to address our needs in this? And so that's where my concern is regarding voting on these items tonight. I think it's, the overall package is good. I believe what you're saying, but I need time to gather all this information. I think we need to talk about whether we have public sale or negotiated sale. I've been doing a lot of research, and some staff have heard me talk about it quite a bit in some of the meetings, but public sale, it is the internet, and anybody can bid on it. And what typically happens, in some cases, JP Morgan or Chase Bank comes in and buys up everything. Well, there are local businesses that I think should have the opportunity to make sure they're a part of this process. So there's an opportunity there through negotiated sales that we could do, and maybe we divide it, maybe we don't. But again, it goes back to the overall process and structure that I think needs to be in place. But I appreciate the information, I think it's very helpful, I just haven't had time to take it all in, and so, don't think I'm voting against Jacobs tonight, I just, for my due diligence, I need to not support it at this time. Any other comments? Any other comments, concerns?
Mrs. Underwood.
Thanks. Um, so just so I understand on, so I, I was holding my comments on CM at risk because I know it was coming up on a, um, agenda item later on. I am a huge fan of it. I, I would, um, if we, if this board didn't allow construction management at risk, I would be very concerned because the design, the traditional model of design bid, build has enough negatives to it that it just does not work for every project. So just from my own understanding, the item that we're voting on later on regarding CM at risk simply allows the district to handle contracts in that way. Not necessar, we're not necessarily saying every single project needs to be handled this way, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. We're just allowing that option.
Right. And Scott and I will talk, you know, we'll talk together, but, um, you know, you'll get the legal aspects of why the resolution is even required.
Okay.
How the law is written and, you know, so we'll go over that.
Okay. And then my second question is simply by allowing CM at risk, um, we are not precluding small and minority businesses from being involved in any way whatsoever, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Scotty, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Mrs. Scotty, followed by Ms. America.
So I think, I, I just want to go back to a discussion that I had with you shortly after the vote of the bond. And I think the CM at risk, is, is that a newer?
Let's definitely.
Thing in the state of Nebraska, is that correct?
There we go.
And so part of the maybe newness of it is because the state of Nebraska's not allowed it for as long and also requires state statute for us to vote on it, to even implement it on any project. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. So yeah, more, more new to Nebraska has been used throughout the country for quite a while.
Okay. This question is more on the bond sale aspect. Thank you to my finance professor from my MBA program. I never thought I'd use all that knowledge. From my understanding, at no point is our board going to have to say specifically, we're doing all public sale or we're doing all negotiated sale. That's a per issuance decision that would be made by our board based on the amount of bonds that we're issuing, the rating that we have for those bonds and what's going on in the financial climate.
That's correct. The, the board could make a decision, a policy decision at the beginning. You can do anything you'd like to do in the way you sell the bonds. One option is just to decide at the very beginning exactly how you'll sell the bonds. The other option is, as you describe, on a bond issue by issue basis, make the determination as to what is the best sale method given, again, the criteria you exactly described, the rating, the size of the bond issue, the maturity of the bond issue, um, as well as goals of trying to meet a, a, a local demand for the, for the bond sale as well. So you have a whole host of options to talk about and, and, and I know, speaking for Bruce, we're not trying to lock you into any one option. You have, with each sale, have that option to, to determine the best method of sale. And market conditions will drive it as well. Uh, when the market crashed in the fall of 2008, uh, there were no competitive sales that were done for a period of about four months. And, and actually very, very few negotiated sales as well. But the first sales that came back to the marketplace were negotiated sales. It took a while for the competitive sales to come back. So clearly there are options and, and pros and cons to be discussed.
Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's exactly right, that the board gets to decide each time. Each time there's an issue, once you decide how you want to do it. And I've seen it done multiple ways in my previous district. We did a public sale for part of a, an issuance and then we did a private sale. I don't know, we, we limited the time. I think we did a, like a one week window. I suspect you're familiar with those kind of issuances too. And, and allowing your local, your local suppliers. Because the board, just like this board, wanted to make sure, one, you get the best rates because you want to get the best rates for your taxpaying citizenry. We want to get the lowest bond rates. The public sale, the big sale may give you the best rates. But on the other hand, you want to meet the needs of your voters who just voted two to one for this issuance. And so you, you may want to do that. In fact, that's certainly something I would want you to consider. But tonight was not an ask on any of that. We're, we're just introducing that because that's, that's going to come up later. So we don't have to put that off till later. That's a conversation we're going to have later anyway. But we wanted to introduce that conversation and come back to you with multiple options for you to consider because there really are multiple ways to deliver that, that bond issuance.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, moving to A2A, 2013, 2014 audits.
All right. All right. My name is Darren Olson. I'm a partner with the accounting firm, Syme Johnson. And I've got Justin Hope, uh, one of our managers. He was the manager on the engagement. This was our seventh year of providing audit services to the district. I want to thank the board for the continued opportunity to do so. We very much value our relationship with the district. Appreciate working with management and their staff. We know it's a large undertaking to, to go through the audit process in addition to their daily tasks. We have a group of approximately off and on eight people here for almost three weeks conducting the audit. And so we greatly appreciate their time and efforts in getting the audit completed and getting information for us. Uh, with that, your deliverables were, I believe, posted on Thursday along with the copy of this presentation. Uh, there's a report to the Board of Education, which contains our required communications that, uh, to those charged with governance in accordance with our auditing standards. And then you have the audit reports, the, um, school district audit, ESU 19 audit. Um, the retirement system has a separate audit. And then KIOS FM radio station has a separate audit performed to comply with the funding that they get from the Corporation of Public Broadcasting. And so what the presentation is going to do is it's going to go through the highlights or go through the required communications. Then I'm just going to highlight some things in the audit report. I'm not going to go through the whole report because it's rather extensive and I don't want to go through it in complete detail. But I'll just kind of highlight some items for you so you can be familiar with it when you're reviewing through it. The, the requirements of the Department of Education Nebraska Audit Public Accounts, we submitted the audit reports on November 11th, 2014. Uh, the significance of that date is Nebraska Department of Education Rule 1, which is the regulations governing the audits of school districts, has a, a requirement to file the audit by November 5th. And so we wanted to be full disclosure that we did not make that deadline. We have not made that deadline any year since we've been doing the audit because of the fact that your audit is, your financial statements are on an accrual basis rather than a cash basis, which is allowed by the Department of Education. So it takes management a longer time to complete the, the financial statements as well as it takes a longer to audit that process. What we did do is our due diligence is we contacted the Department of Education Director of Finance prior to the deadline to make them aware that we were going to be a little late. And we kind of gave them a window of what we were looking at, as, which is what the process we've gone through every year. Um, they acknowledged it and just told us to get it in when we, as soon as we could. There have, there were no ramifications as a result of being filing late. So I just wanted to at least bring that to your attention. Uh, then we also have a submission to the Federal Audit Clearing House. This is for the, um, school district audit only. And that is due to the fact that, uh, you have a, a audit required in accordance with OMB Circular A133. It's a compliance audit due to the extent of the federal dollars that you expend every year. Uh, we're working with, uh, we'll be working, that's an online submission process. We're working to get that done now. We'll work with management. Management has to go through a certification process and then we'll get that submitted. We should have that done by the end of the month. And then the submission to the Corporation of Public Broadcasting, there's a process of information that is also done online. That has to be done by the end of the calendar year. And I know we'll work with management. We have to go through and certify the numbers on there to make sure they were consistent with their audit report. And we'll have that done by the end of the, uh, I think before Christmas break is the goal. So, um, to go through the required communications in, in the report to the board, uh, our audits are conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards and OMB Circular A133 due to the extent of the federal awards that, that are included in your report. Our responsibility is that we perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And our opinion is, uh, an unmodified opinion, which is basically stating that the financial statements do indeed present fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Are required to communicate any, um, changes in accounting practices. And this year we did have a few due to some new, um, uh, pronouncements issued by the Government Accounting Standards Board. GASB Statement 65, which basically changed some things that used to be classified as assets or liabilities on the financial statements are referred to as deferred outflows and inflows of resources. So you will note that in the financial statement. That did require a, a small retroactive restatement to prior years because of that, because there were certain items in the past that were treated as assets that are now supposed to be expensed rather than, than treated as assets. And so we did restate for that purpose. Um, but everybody that implements this and has debt issuance costs on their financial statements would have to go through that process. And then GASB 67, Financial Reporting for Pension Plans, uh, that was applicable to the retirement system audit. There was a number of new required disclosures and required supplementary information uh, in that audit that went in accordance with GASB Statement 67 and we assisted. Uh, we met with management and we met with the actuaries uh, in preparation to this to let them know and be aware of all, what they had to get ready because a lot of the information in, in the retirement system audit report is based on actuarial valuations. And so we met with them well in advance. It was back last spring to, to prepare them for what was going to be needed to do the audit. Um, they followed through with a very extensive and very clear report to get that done. And then we assisted management with some of the disclosures and information to include in the financial statements. Uh, and then as far as management's judgments and estimates, this is really man, uh, estimates is where management's judgment could be used to influence the results of the financial statements. So as part of our audit process, um, we spent a, a lot of time reviewing management's estimates and we've listed the estimates there. We look at the processes that they, in place to value their estimates and then we make sure that they're reasonable, make sure that they're applying their estimates consistently on an annual basis, that they're making changes from year to year. Obviously that raises some red flags for us. Uh, but their processes are relatively consistent, reasonably stated, and we feel conservative in their, in their valuation. Uh, and then the next piece, uh, we'll come to the adjustments of, um, as part of the audit report. I mean, our opinion in our audit report, uh, is on a number of different opinion units. Uh, you have the government wide statements and you have the fund financial statements. The government wide, um, presentation is a separate opinion unit. Each major fund is a separate opinion unit within the financial statements. And so we have different materiality thresholds for each of those opinion units. So when we do, as part of our audit process, go through and, and find misstatements or find potential adjustments, we evaluate that based on the opinion unit. That is, as to whether it's going to be significant to that opinion unit. And so I wanted to at least introduce that first. This year we had three audit adjustments. Um, two of them were, was information provided by management from the time they sent us, um, the financial statements till when we came out here for fieldwork. And so we really, as a result of the work that we did, only had one audit adjustment. And it was to, uh, the Internal Service Fund. And if that would have been in a different fund, say the general fund, we probably would have passed on it due to the insignificance of it. It was just significant to that one fund. So, um, the, the piece I wanted to iterate on the, on the adjustments, we didn't have any adjustments for ESU 19, um, the retirement system or KIOS, is going back, I'm going to go back four years to 2010, when we, when we had our adjustments. 2010, we had 14 adjustments. 2011, we had 12. 2012, we had eight. To, last year we had five adjustments. This year we only have three. So basically what I wanted to, I mean, every year, management has made improvements or taken our suggestions for improvements and applied them in the process of putting their financial statements together. So I at least wanted to point that out to you so you can see that they're making continuous improvements in that financial reporting process. Uh, and then we did have a few reclassification entries that we made. And then pass audit adjustments. There was a total of 10 adjustments in your report. It looks like more than that, but some of the adjustments hit multiple opinion units. Um, but there were 10 of them that we deemed immaterial collectively to the opinion units that they applied to. But you'll see those listed in the report as well. So those are not reflected in the audited financial statements. Uh, communication of significant matters. So this is the area, did management try to influence the audit process? Um, we didn't have any disagreements with management. We didn't have any issues discussed with management prior to retention. We didn't have any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Um, consultations with other accountants. I know, um, where we were made aware that you did consult with another accounting firm regarding, uh, uh, putting a procedure or policy in place regarding, uh, your claims audit process that you have to go through. Uh, I believe it's in accordance with Nebraska Revised Statute, one of the Nebraska Revised Statutes related to that process. So I know you're working with another firm on that. So we did include that in the report. Certain communications between management and our firm. Management's representation letter is available upon request if you would like to review that. And then we, our quality review is in there. We're required to go through a review of our process to make sure we're complying with our auditing standards in our audit process. We actually will be going through that in two weeks from now. Uh, so we're gearing up for that effort as well. But our most recent report, which is, we have, we're required to do that every three years. So our report from three years ago is included in there. Uh, and then reportable matters in accordance with Government Auditing Standards or OMB Circular A133. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies reported in the reports. We hadn't, there were no compliance findings related to, uh, the major programs that we looked at in accordance with OMB Circular A133 as well. So we didn't have any reportable matters therein. And then we did include some suggestions for continuous improvement. Uh, the OMB issued new uniform grant guidance this year. Um, that is going to result in some changes in the, uh, OMB Circular A133 audit process relating to, um, the threshold as well as the, the threshold for looking at, um, major programs. Um, probably won't have too much of an impact on you guys due to the extent of the federal funding that you do receive or expend in a, in a given year. There was also changes in the cost circulars. Um, one of the provisions in there is regarding changes in documentation of time and effort requirements. And we did communicate that with management. I know a lot of the time and effort documentation that you do is guidance through, uh, the Department of Education. So I'm sure that they will be probably looking at revising some of their standards. So just want to bring it to your attention to make sure that you guys are complying with that. That won't be in effect until the beginning of the fiscal year ending 2016. So September 1, 2015 is when some of that'll go into place. But I'm sure that the Department of Ed will be, um, communicating that with the school districts as far as, you know, really for Title I and some of those that are required to have documentation of time and effort for their, uh, participation in those programs. And then new, um, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Accounting and Financial Reporting Standards. I just listed the three that are out there right now. The one that's going to have the most significant impact to you, and we've discussed this in the past, is GASB Statement 68. So where GASB 67 was for standalone audits of retirement systems, 68 is for the employers of those retirement systems. And the biggest, you're going to have some changes and some disclosures. The biggest piece that will impact you will be, you will have to, um, include the net pension liability of the, of the retirement system in your financial statements. So that will be a, a significant change in, in the net position in your financial statements. Um, your net pension liability is disclosed in the OSERS report currently. So you can certainly, uh, see that in the, in the Retirement System Audit Report. And then just, um, just to summarize, I won't spend a lot of time on the, the audited financial statements themselves, but just want to kind of go through it. themselves, but just want to kind of go through it so you're familiar with what's all in there. Again, our audit report was on the first couple of pages. We have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. There's other reporting matters in there. You have certain required supplementary information and other supplementary information that the Department of Education requires you to include. Most of that is related to budgetary comparison schedules for each of your funds, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards as required by OMB circular A133. And then there's a reference to separate report in accordance with government auditing standards that is also included. The first piece of required supplementary information is management's discussion and analysis. Again, if this was not included as part of the audit, there would be a qualification in the opinion. So management's discussion and analysis, there's certain requirements that need to be included in there, but ultimately, it's management's introduction of the financial statements to the users of the financial statements. It's a requirement of the Government Accounting Standards Board. And then the financial statements and related notes. So you have your government-wide presentation, which is your full accrual presentation. Then you have your fund financial statements, which are presented on the modified accrual presentation. That includes your major funds, as well as then other, there's other and other funds category in each of those as well. And then the notes to the financial statements, I highlighted a few of them on here that I really just wanted to bring to your attention to go through. The reporting entity, so this includes the various entities that are included in the district's financial statements, because ESU 19 has rolled up as a fund of the district as well as KIOS. So that's all disclosed in that note. A discussion on the, explaining the individual financial statements, as well as the measurement focus and basis of accounting included in each of those financial statements is included in Note 1B through D. Your capital assets is a breakdown of your capital assets, the capital assets for the, so reporting on the accrual basis of accounting, you include your capital assets. If you're on the cash basis accounting, none of that information would be in your report. So you're being very transparent as far as the information included in your report. But you have approximately net value of your, net depreciable value of your tax, of your capital assets is approximately 363 million. Note seven is your bonds payable obligations that are outstanding, and it gives your future debt service obligations. Obviously, we'll have some significant changes to that disclosure and those requirements next year. And then fund balance shows the current fund balance positions for all of your major funds. Breaks down between spendable versus non-spendable. And then also discloses you have a policy within your general fund, a minimal fund balance policy that you're required to maintain. I believe it's, is it 5% of, 5% of the previous year's expenditures? So that's also disclosed in there as well. Note 12, there were a couple of prior period adjustments made. This was primarily related to, you continue to go through an inventory of your property and your capital assets, and there were a few things found that weren't capitalized. These were mostly immaterial to the financial statements, but management wanted to recognize them and retroactively restate them to prior years. Note 13 is the change in accounting principle. That was the restatement for GASB 67 is highlighted in there. Note 14 is the prospective accounting changes for GASB statement 68. So it's just identifying to the user that this is going to be included in here next year. And then the last note, we did include a subsequent event note as a result of the election results that you are going to be going through general obligation bond issuance this next Then the rest of the information included in the report is your required supplementary information. Here again is the budgetary comparison schedules. So GASB requires it for certain funds, the general fund and your major special revenue funds. And then the rest of the funds are basically included to comply with requirements that the Department of Education wants, but that's not considered required supplementary information because it's not required by the county, the GASB. And then the last part of the report is the reporting in accordance with government auditing standards and OMB circular A133. There's two different reports back there. Government auditing standards requires us to report in accordance with, or over internal control over financial reporting, as well as compliance with laws and regulations. And then OMB circular A133 requires us to focus on the major programs, compliance with the major program requirements, and then evaluate and test internal control over compliance. And we did not have any reportable matters related therein. So in connection with your audit in accordance with OMB circular A133, I just put this in here as well, just so you were aware of what we looked at. You had a total of a little over $80 million expended in federal awards. You had $82 million last year, so you're relatively very consistent there as far as that goes. Has the separate report back there, the major programs that we looked at. And these are, A133 requires us to focus on the large and risky programs. So we go through, there's a threshold between what's large and small, and then we have to evaluate them based on whether we feel are high risk or low risk. And we go through a process of doing that. And then we also have to meet a certain threshold. For you, it was 50% of the total federal award. So and you can see, we did the child nutrition cluster, Title I, and then the medical assistance program or the Medicaid MAPS program through Health and Human Services. And so that covered approximately 64% of your total federal awards. And I think that is it. So I'll open to any questions.
Mrs. Fay.
I just have an easy question. What major programs did you do last year?
Easy question.
Sorry?
No, I believe it was, I believe it was Title I. We pretty much do Title I every year. I believe it was special ed, and then the Medicaid program.
It was special ed.
Yeah, I think it was special ed. So there's been, there's about, so the large programs are required to be done once every three years. Your large programs primarily on an annual basis are the meal program, child nutrition cluster, Title I, special ed, and then Head Start. And so we have to do each of those at least once every three years. We pretty much do two of them every year because in order to meet the threshold, we got to grab two of the big ones. The Medicaid program is deemed a high-risk program in the OMB circular A133 compliance supplement. So pretty much, we're going to end up doing that one every year as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I think the only other thing I would say is that, you know, this is, of the four audits I've been presenting. I was going to say sat through, but been presented.
Sat through.
My time on the board, this is one of the cleanest, I think, if that's the right word. So congratulations to the finance department and Dr. Poole, who's, and the team, the whole team. But it's a good, it's a credit to you and your department. So thank you, and thank you for the work that you do.
Yeah, as I said, it's been a process of continuous improvement, it seems like, every year, and going through the process, so.
Mrs. Gaudy.
So I too want to thank the finance team, because I know what it's like to work on an audit when it's not clean. It's a whole lot more fun when it is clean, so that's great, good job. And one of the things I just wanted to point out to the board was, when you spoke about the accrual basis, which we're the only school district in the state that does that, correct?
You are the only school district in the state of Nebraska that reports on full accrual basis, so.
Other states have the requirement that it is accrual, but in Nebraska, it can be either way.
Yes, for Iowa, all the, well, I know of a few, a few of the larger ones, they are, they are full accrual, so.
So I just wanted to point out to the board that not only the transparency piece that you mentioned, it just clearly, I think more accurately, reflects income and expenses during the fiscal year, and that's really important, as well as the fact that we report our assets and depreciation and all of those sorts of things as well. And the other thing along with that that I want to point out is, well, we're also the only one that has our own retirement fund. And so because of that, we're really the only school district that has a clean number when it comes, as clean as it can be based on the discount rate, for that unfunded liability on the retirement piece. I know that in the OSERS trustees meetings, we've kind of talked about how will that look with the actuary, because they also do it for the state. But because of how we report, we're probably more transparent. Is that fair to say?
It will, it will show up in next year's financial statements. You will be able to recognize it, yes. The other, I'm not quite sure how Npers is going to do that for the other districts, because somehow, they're going to have to determine each of the prorata share of each districts. And that's really with everything. Each district, each other, any other governmental organization that's in Npers, they're going to have to determine their share. And then again, it will be, since they're only on the cash basis, they'll only have to footnote disclose it. They won't have to include it in their financial statements because they're not presented in accordance with GAAP, whereas you'll have it in yours, you know, in your, in your statements as well as in the disclosures. So your presentation of that will definitely be more transparent than what other school districts will be doing.
So I just wanted to share that with the board, because I know that may be a question that someone gets asked.
Any other, Dr. Poole?
President Wayne and board members, I would just like to take an opportunity to say that, first of all, that we believe that Simon Johnson has done a marvelous job of working with staff to suggest improvements, and that is a plus. It has enabled us to move forward. I want to remind the board that this audit is required by Nebraska statute. We have no choice but to do an external third-party audit and have it presented to the board, to the state, to the state auditor, all of those groups. But I also want to take just a moment to say that I remind our staff constantly that we welcome an audit. An audit is not something that we are afraid to be involved with. It takes a lot of time. But the reality, if an audit is done well, it will provide you with information as how you can do things better. And I think that has to be the key on an audit. And in closing, I bet there is hardly a week that goes by that the Omaha Public Schools isn't being audited by someone.
Any other questions? Seeing, I'm going to move on to I-2C. Thank you for all your help.
Yep, thank you.
Wait, we have to, sorry, we have to adopt your.
Okay.
I entertain a motion to adopt the audit that was, that is before us.
So moved.
So motion on the floor to adopt the 2013, 2014 audits. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gaudy, second by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gaudy.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to I-2B. First reading of policy 4000s.
Neelis Brash here this evening to talk about the 4000 series titled Personnel in front of the Board of Education. They were at you, presented to you, I believe, not at the last meeting that the Board of Education had, but the previous one. So we have made a few changes to those that were previously presented to you. And so what I'd like to just pretty much do is highlight some of those changes that were made. So I'll walk through the policies, starting with policy 4003, if you'd like to bring that one up. On 4003, we've changed wording specific to who accepted the allegations of the nondiscrimination and who will handle the allegations pursuant to that piece of who handles allegations. That was part of an OCR regulation. And so what we do is we have to have a designated person, and that's who they've designated for us. So that needs to be there pursuant to that resolution, just kind of as an FYI. And then if we go on to number two on page three of 10, if retaliation occurs, the district will respond with prompt and strong responsive action up to including termination. So we changed the expulsion language out of that particular policy in 4003 to make sure that that complied. To make number three full, we added a sentence about if the complaint is regarding the superintendent, that that would go to the Board of Education, so that it gives kind of a designated timeline as to who that that would proceed to. Then if you turn to page nine of 10, if you look under F, it says District Law Enforcement Unit. We've changed that to the Office of Community School and Family Engagement. So those were the few changes made to 4003, just to kind of walk you through those. Let's see. Next, let's pull up policy 4012. On policy 4012, the first sentence, in the event that a student comma employee, we've taken out the word student, so that's no longer there, since this happens to be infectious disease policy relating to personnel rather than students. We have a similar personnel or student, excuse me, student policy. And so we wanted to make sure that they were clearly delineated between the two. So that has been separated out with regard to that piece. And let's see, 4026, if you'd like to pull that one up. On under nepotism, we have, or any employee of the, instead of board, we've replaced it with district. And then just for discussion purposes, it was brought to our attention that under, if you want to pull up 4190, and I'm going to do that on the screen here real quick. Then on page three of four, if you want to open that one up. Oh, this is all of it. I obviously opened the wrong thing. So anyway, under 4190, if you've got it open, you're not as technologically challenged as I am this evening. You can look at, on page three of four, number six. Shall not tutor for rumination students assigned to his or her classes unless approved by, and I suppose that the choice is yours as to who you want that designated approval was. It was the board. It could be the principal, it could be the superintendent or his or her designee. I don't know who you think is the most appropriate person there, but the principal was suggested. And so I think that just to take a look and see who you think is the most appropriate individual, that might be something that we could change to another designated individual, so. And that's pretty much it. I'm happy to entertain any questions. Hi.
Mrs. America.
Hi. Backing up to 4003, on page nine of 10 on 7F.
Sure, absolutely.
I think part of the line got cut off in the new copy.
Okay.
Because it says anti-discrimination, anti-harassment, and anti... And I think it's supposed to continue to say retaliation standards and compliance requirements.
It would.
Do we need to officially move to do that, or?
I'll have, hold on just a second.
Okay.
So yes, under F, you would need to make a motion to add that particular language back in.
Can we do it all at the... Can we just do all the motions with all the, one big motion at the end with all the added language and corrected language?
Correct.
Okay.
You could do that.
Are you done? I wasn't sure, because Ms. Underwood, Ms. Underwood?
You're done. Okay. I just had a question under the same section on where it says designated compliance administrator. What kind of a person is the compliance administrator? Just looking for an example of who that would be.
Could you refer to me specifically where you're looking at in the policy?
Page nine of 10.
Okay.
The same area where Ms. America was discussing a minute ago. Number seven.
So the compliance officer, if you go back to A with regard to designated individuals to accept allegations, that would be the superintendent. The person that would follow any inquiries would be the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And then I don't know with regard to the designated compliance administrator. Let's see. So... Hold on, let me read through this. I'm sure it's in here.
According to three of 10, it says compliance administrator designated, I don't know if it's the same thing. And it says designated administrator, and then it says such as principal in the same paragraph. How?
I think if I remember correctly, and I'm just going off a recall, not off of what I'm reading right now, and it may take me a few minutes to find it, but it's, it varies on where you're located at. So it's, if it's a building, it's the principal. If it's, you know, tack, it's your administrator. It may be the Office of Community and Family Engagement, but it varies based on who the compliant, that person would be just ensuring that all staff would get properly informed and trained on any particular issue. But then, you know, with regard to how you file your designation in that, as in A on the first page.
My concern with this policy is, I feel it's too confusing. We are a big organization, and I just feel like there should be a number or an email a person can call, and that will be the official start of a complaint. I know in my former job that we had a values hotline, and if there was an issue, you just called that hotline, that went to the right person. You could be anonymous or leave your name, and then it was taken care of. Just my opinion.
I think some of the length, if I might just add, is related to some of the legal compliance that we have to have. And so I, I would say that part of the confusing nature that you might be encountering in this policy is because of the length of the requirements and, and what we must comply with. And so, you know, we could certainly look at, you know, trying to more specifically tailor certain pieces of this policy, but the district has to have a policy like this, and it needs to be somewhat similar to what you see in front of you, because a lot of it's with regard to that legal compliance piece.
And I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just, like, the first paragraph of section three on page three of 10 should report all incidences, et cetera, et cetera. We talk about designated administrator. I think we just designated administrator and say, this particular office, you call this number, and it's clear for everybody, and maybe that's not possible, but what I don't want is the staff, to if they feel that way, they have to reference this and try to figure out who they should talk to, who they shouldn't talk to. And I just think for simplicity purposes, they could pick up the phone, send an email, outline what their complaint is, and then whatever staff or whoever that person is would handle that from that point on, and that would be our designated administrator. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Mr. Ray, you... Mrs. Fay.
Is there a district practice, a document, maybe this is a question for Dr. Garnett, or I'm not sure. Is there something that outlines practices that is in, that is in compliance with policy that would simplify what Mr. Wayne is talking about? Is there something?
I think we would just look at, if we're looking at harassment or any thing of that nature, it'd be policy 10.01, and we would follow the outline of that. I think when we look at a designated compliance person, we would probably look at the Office of Equity and Diversity for that contact.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, if the policy has to be written in a certain way to meet some sort of statutory requirements, which is, I think, what Mrs. Neelis Brash was saying, then does the district then have some sort of document that describes practices that meet, that, that are in line with these policies? So that what you just told me about who those people are is outlined in practice so they can do exactly what Mr. Wayne is talking about. I have a grievance, let me, this practice in the district is this, which we know is in compliance with policy.
It's outlined in procedures, not policy as much, so we have procedures.
That's what I'm talking about, procedures. I was saying practices, but, so you have a procedures document that is more simple than the policy?
It's more of a, probably a checklist that, that either the Employee Relations Coordinator would use, or in the Office of Equity and Diversity would use.
But we have that, I guess, that meets these requirements of policy. I mean, I know this is just being drafted, this being passed, but...
We have in the past a procedure, so we just need to make sure it's aligned with this policy.
Mrs. Snow?
Soon, thank you, Mr. President. As soon as you were talking about the website, I went to the University of Nebraska at Omaha website, and their contact is their Office of Equity and Diversity, and it just simply says, if you have any grievances, call this number, kind of like that hotline. So I see other groups doing that, so it's really interesting.
And if I just might, with regard to that first paragraph that you see there, we have to have that language. That's part of an OCR ruling. It can't be as simple as you would like it to be because we've had a previous agreement that binds us to that particular language. And that's just, that is what that process ended up with agreeing to, so there's, there's no wiggle room in A whatsoever.
Talking about three, one? Section three?
Elimination of Discrimination. A, 4003, very first page.
Oh. So the agreement is the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources?
Correct.
When was that?
I, you know, it was before me, so I probably can't answer, but I am aware that that's, that was what, what was agreed to. I don't know how long ago it was.
And that's binding forever?
Well, I, I would think that if you enter into a, an agreement with OCR with regard to something like this, I, I would be very cautious in your approach to not changing what was previously agreed to. I, I think you'd want to approach them and see if you could change the language, and that may be challenging.
I, I just would be curious to know when we entered into the agreement, and particularly if it was before we reached unitarian status versus beforehand when it came to DSEG. Because I kind of, I kind of agree with Mr. Snow. I mean, we, we have an office, and I just think about it from the employee's perspective. Who can I just call to have, to file the grievance? And if it's the superintendent, I'm okay. But I just figured that person's getting a lot of other calls, too.
I believe it was after unitary status, because that was a fairly long time ago, and I, I would say that this was within the last, I, I would think 2008, some, 2007, somewhere in there is where this, this occurred. So that's my guess, but I don't, don't hold me to that. It's what I have in my head from what I recollect, but I don't want to commit to that particular date.
Any other questions? Mrs. Gaudy?
Okay, Ms. America's giving me credit, but she actually caught a student that I didn't catch in wording, so. Page nine, well, I'm looking at nine of 11, so policy number 4003, 7B. Training for, should it just be employees? Or does it, or did you intend for it to mean students, too?
Yes, correct. So it should just read employees. Good catch.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Policy Number 400 Series, 4000 Series that has been corrected and modified before us.
So moved.
So motion on the floor by Mrs. Gaudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Gaudy, second by Ms. Williams. Any more discussion? Any other kind of motion, discussions, questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Wayne?
Standing.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gaudy?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Seven aye and one abstention.
Motion carries. Moving to I to C, Alternative Contracting Method for Construction Management Contracting. Dr. Turnquist.
President Wayne and members of the board, Scott Dive will be here to delineate more for you.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm here to present the resolution that is in your agenda concerning construction management. As you know, traditionally, this district has done design, bid, build, as Cheryl indicated, which means you prepare the plans, you put them out for bid, you word a contract to construct. It's a very linear process. In 2002, the legislature started to open that process up to construction management and design-build. Prior to that time, we had to construct things by design, bid, build, under state statute for anything over $40,000. This provides an exception to that rule, and Jacobs is recommending this for certain projects, as Cheryl will explain. Basically, this procedure would allow for designation of a construction manager at the start of the project, to work with the architect during the design, and then to construct the project. So if you think of a CM, a CM essentially manages the construction, manages the construction by trade contractors. The CM will bid the trade contractors, the CM works for a fee, and the fee is computed based on the total cost of construction or the GMP. Your assurance on price comes from the GMP, which you will get from the CM at some point in time in the process. So that means that the price will not exceed the guaranteed maximum price. If, in fact, the project comes in for lower than that amount, the owner gets to keep the savings under the way we would propose to do it. If it comes in above that amount, the construction manager is responsible for all costs in excess of the GMP. So that's your guarantee of price, so you can stay within your budget. I've done a number of contracts for private companies. Construction manager at risk is used a lot in private contracting. It has definite advantages because of the ability to work with the architect, because sometimes you have difficult phasing, sometimes you have constructibility issues. Contractors know about that stuff. Contractors can also help with cost estimating as you're going through the design process, so you don't end up with bids that may way exceed what you have budgeted. So there are definite advantages to doing this. However, the legislature has not made this process easy, because there is a bias towards bidding, because it, it is, it is an open process, everybody gets a chance to submit a bid, it's easy to understand. So what we have to do is we have to comply with statutory requirements in order to be able to do construction manager at risk. The first thing we have to do as a prerequisite, even starting down this path, is to adopt a resolution like has been presented to you. What this resolution essentially does is start us down the path of being able to use construction manager at risk for those projects that the district elects to use it for. It doesn't require you to use it for any projects. It doesn't mean that you have to do it at all if you don't want to. It also means, though, once you get down this path, you could use it for other projects, even projects that aren't involved with the bond issue. So it does have some benefit to the district if you think this is a good form of contracting. So the first thing... So the first thing you would do is pass the resolution. The next step is that staff would bring back to you procedures that have to be implemented to be able to use this method of contracting. And this is quite a bit different than what you're used to. The procedures would include procedures for preparation and, and the content of the RFP, procedures to pre-qualify construction managers, procedures for preparing and submitting proposals, procedures for evaluating proposals, procedure for negotiating CM contracts, and procedures for filing and acting on formal protests if somebody's disappointed with the process. Once you get through those procedures and you decide you pick a project for this to be implemented on, then you have to prepare an RFP document that then has to be advertised for thirty days, copy filed with the Department of Education. There are a bunch of requirements for that, I won't get into that, I won't bother you with that detail. The real change is in the evaluation of proposals once they come in. They have to be evaluated and ranked. There has to be a selection committee appointed. The selection committee includes at least five people. It would include board members, staff members, anyone having a special expertise in construction. It would include a resident of the district other than those people previously mentioned. And of course, anybody with the expertise or the resident of the district cannot be an employee of the district or have a financial interest in the outcome of the decision. The committee then evaluates and ranks construction managers based on financial resources, ability to perform, character integrity and judgment, performance on previous projects, ability to meet project schedule, compliance with the laws, and any other information that the district wants to obtain from the CM. Once the selection committee ranks them, you start a negotiation process with the highest-ranked responder, try to negotiate a contract. If that can't be done, you work your way down the list. If you can't reach an agreement with any one of them, you can either do a new RFP or you can abandon that procedure and go traditional and design bid build. So, and obviously, the contract, once negotiated, will come back to the board for approval. So that's kind of the process. I don't think that, in looking at this, I don't think that the board is committing itself to use this on any particular project. There is a lot of work that has to be done. Once this is adopted, this kind of gets us down, started down the path. So that's why we brought it to you, because we, we think it's important for certain projects, we really want to get rolling on it. Any questions?
Any questions? Mrs. Fay.
So there's one of those committees for each project?
No, I think you could have a selection committee for a number of projects, because it would really be burdensome to, to do a selection committee for a whole bunch of, for a bunch of individual projects.
So maybe you would lump one tranche, maybe, of the bond, would have one selection committee for that entire?
I think as long as you meet that requirement of the statute, you can pretty much design that how you want to design it. So, you know, I think we can do that, and you may have had experience with selection committees before, Cheryl.
You can think of it as a, kind of a two-step process. So first, we would do pre-qualifications. We'd, we'd get the firm information, and that would be a committee that would review those statements of qualifications. That gives us background on the firms, what types of projects they're capable of doing. Then we would do them in groups of projects where we would, so, so they're grouped together, so you're not doing one off all at a time. We would have two or three or four of them at a time, where we could do the proposals together and then do the interviews together. And as Scott talked about, it's, it's a committee, a joint committee at that time, that includes staff, outside members. Typically, you have, have the design team, because they've been on board to begin with, and school staff. So when you do these group interviews, say you have four projects, you may do, you know, two days of interviews with how many firms, and then the four, think of it as four separate little teams together, talk about which CMGC is right for each individual project, going through the criteria, you know, who had the best plan on this project for phasing, you know, how did they respond to certain questions. Fee is the last part that you look at, you go through and evaluate their qualifications specific to that project, do your ranking, and then consider the, their guaranteed fee. Not to be confused with the guaranteed maximum price, which is the cost of the work. So there's, there's two steps to awarding a contract. You select the CMGC or CM at Risk, you negotiate their fee, get them under contract, they work for, you know, however long that, that design period is. Then when the design is complete enough, they bid that work out, they prepare a guaranteed maximum price and come back, and then you award that, that GMP, guaranteed maximum price. So it's, it's two steps. If you can't agree on a GMP, you don't, the contract language, you know, we haven't, we haven't developed the standard contract, but typically, there's a language that says if you can't come to an agreement, you don't owe them any money, other than their pre-construction portion of that fee. So you have them break that down as well.
So basically, you end up with, two times you give back to the board. You approve the original contract, get through the design process, they give you a GMP proposal, you negotiate that, there'll be qualifications on it, conditions and things like that, and that's an amendment to the contract, which comes back to the board that establishes the maximum price.
Thank you.
Any other? Mrs. Underwood.
So just a couple of comments. I think that historically, Nebraska has always gone with the design, bid, build, be, or, yeah, because it, it sounds good, lowest bid, that sounds good, why would you not go with that? Like Cheryl mentioned earlier, to me, in, in my experience, that only lends itself to change orders in the future, which, when all is said and done, end up being a higher cost than, you know, what it would have been otherwise. So I'm a fan of this, the CM at Risk. I think that the contractor gets a deeper knowledge, because they're involved from the very beginning. They get a deeper knowledge of the project, and having the entire team in the room day one, I just think is, is, in my experience, it's been really effective. So that's my two cents on that.
So, I just have a question. So what exactly are we, are you, is staff asking to be approved today? The, the ability to use this method, or are we also giving the go-ahead for certain projects to be used in this method?
No, for, the first step, this would be to use the method. Then, once the board indicates this is a method they want to use and explore, then the staff will prepare the procedures to implement it. And then, at that point in time, once the procedures are adopted, then we can proceed down the path of specific projects.
Okay.
And how you want that to relate, if you want to approve the method before they do this, or you want to let the staff do that, that's up to our policies and procedures as will be approved by the board.
So the next step is policies.
Yes.
So I'm okay with creating policies after this, as long as, I'm still not sure how this all works, but I'm okay with, with this portion. Mr. Scanlon.
I'd just like to agree with Katie, that this is a very good project delivery method. I guess what you can think of is if you're building a house, and you've hired your architect and your engineer, who you're also then going to hire is the actual home builder earlier on in the project, so that they can show you savings of, you know, where you might be able to make better decisions in the building process, in order to save money throughout the project, and also recommend alternatives that might be more cost-effective. So it's just kind of a, getting the actual builder in the, the process earlier on, and it allows for more collaboration. And you can still meet DBE goals, because you can require that construction manager, they're going to sub out certain items, like electrical, HVAC, and you can start to say, okay, we want this percentage of this project to go to DBEs, and then they can monitor that system as well. They'll know who the DBEs are throughout the community, and it just gives you, gives you oversight from the actual construction process, whereas design, bid, build, just, you have just input from the engineer and the architect, you're leaving out those, the expertise of the actual construction companies that could tell you, you know, where, and they can help actually budget a little bit better and a little bit more accurate, where they're not using just kind of rule-of-thum numbers, they're actually seeing projects where, what the actual market is. So I think it's a very good process, and it would allow for benefits, it would benefit OPS in its projects.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the alternative contracting methods.
So moved.
So motion by Mr. Scanlon to approve the alternative contracting methods revolution, resolution that's before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Underwood. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. Moving to I to D. Dr. Turnquist or Mr. Evans?
I'll defer to Dr. Turnquist.
President Wayne, members of the board, Superintendent Evans, this is the presentation of the amendment to the agreement with the Jacobs Company for Project Management for the bond. And Mr. Dieh will address this.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you recall, in March of two thousand and fourteen, Board of Education approved a contract with Jacobs Management for Stakeholder Communication and Pre-Construction Services, pre-bond issue, and of course, that stopped before the bond issue, because they were not performing any of their services before that. We had an agreement, a statement in the agreement, which said that we would negotiate for program management services after the bond issue, if the bond issue was approved by the voters. That is based, we've concluded those negotiations, and presenting an amendment to you, that is the results of those negotiations. There were basically three things recited in the agreement that were to be agreed upon. One was the fee, one was the duration of services, and one was limitation of any liability. As you recall, the amount on the stakeholder communication piece was a four hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That phase is done. Pre-construction work has pretty much been worked through, that's coming up with contracts and identifying consultants and the like. So we're starting in program management services. The duration of the services is set forth in schedule, which is Exhibit Two to the agreement, is sixty months approximately from when the agreement is signed. The fee, as stated in the agreement, is three point seven nine five percent of the bond amount, which is fifteen million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Which is reduced by amounts that we've already paid for pre-construction. In addition, there is another reduction formally in the agreement. As you recall, in the bond budget, there are monies allocated for some site acquisition and conceptual plan services. Jacobs would be involved in the conceptual plan portion of it, but would not be involved in the site acquisition. So we have a formula to back out those costs out of the fee. We don't know what those costs are going to be currently, so what we have provided in the agreement is that once they're determined, we will take the amount of the site acquisition cost, which includes site acquisition closing costs, title insurance, relocation amounts and things like that, multiply it times the three point seven nine five, and subtract that from the fee. So we essentially back out land acquisition costs once they're determined. And then that amount is prorated, prorated out of the remainder payments, so that it comes out on an equal basis. There are, there is some in-kind services provided by district, which is space, things that, normal office supplies, things such as that. There is, however, no reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses, so this is an all-in cost. That differs slightly from the last agreement we had with Jacobs back in two thousand, where there was reimbursement for certain out-of-pocket expenses, particularly travel, which for them can amount to a significant amount of money. So the fee does include reimbursement for, I mean, includes all out-of-pocket expenses. The liability limitation amount is scaled up from five million up to fifteen million over the course of the project. It excludes claims by third parties, it excludes any amounts that, where we claim overpayment, and it also excludes any intentional breaches of contract by Jacobs. Just to compare this with where we were in two thousand, in two thousand, the duration was somewhat shorter than this. Obviously, the amount then was two hundred and fifty-six million dollars, I believe is was the number. The fee at that time was fourteen million, eight ninety-nine, eight twenty-eight. So we're approximately, roughly a million dollars higher than that figure on a fairly much significantly larger bond issue, that's going to take probably a year longer or more than the last bond issue did. So we see that as, as a positive sign. The, the reimbursables were allowed in that agreement or not allowed in this agreement, as I said. In-kind compensation is pretty much identical between the two contracts.
Any discussion? Mr. Snow.
So, thank you. If I'm correct, number four, all those things listed, we provide for Jacobs for free?
Yes, that's, that's a part of, otherwise, Mr. Snow, they'd have to go and run office base, they'd have to go and buy computers and buy computers and like.
And it's interesting, it's not a percentage of, or an amount that we could give them, that they would reimburse us back for.
And I'd have to talk to them about how they, you know, how they would, how they computed that in, but it, in, in, it was the same, essentially, it parallels what we did last time with them in two thousand. It's identical to that, and they did office that time out at the service center, which was very beneficial to the district, because they were right next to all the construction personnel that were involved, the bond project, that are employed by the district.
Do we know how much this will cost? That's the thing.
I don't, I do not have that figure. They're using existing space, I believe, Dr. Turnquist?
I'm just looking at, like, postage, all this stuff, copy equipment, supply cost, computer hardware.
Yes, we're using, we're using existing space and moving things around, moving them in there, so they'll be close to our own construction people. And equipment that we buy is retained by the district.
Are we, we are buying additional equipment for them?
Well, you have, have to have computers.
Okay. That's all I want to know. And I just want to say that I will not be voting in favor of this contract, not for Jacobs, because I think they are a great project manager, will be a great project manager, but I do believe that we should have, I think, Mr. Scanlon, you call them DBEs, disadvantaged business enterprises. I do believe that we need that in policy and in their contract. Just like Mr. Wayne said, if we came back and we changed something, it could be an issue, but I, I don't know how that looks. I was looking online, trying to find other school districts and places that have done that. I know the federal government requires a certain percentage for highway, Department of Transportation requires businesses that subcontract out, that they have a certain percentage of them, and I think we need to do that, to not just hold Jacobs accountable, but our board accountable. I don't know what all the other board members think about, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, we have certain restrictions we have to live with, because of two thousand and eight constitutional amendment that was passed in state of Nebraska about preferences in contracting. So we just have to be very careful how we deal with this, we don't violate the law. That's why we have talked about small and disadvantaged business enterprises to, to make it a DBE program. We are meeting with, with, on that tomorrow morning. There also is language in the existing Jacobs contract that talks about Jacobs being liaison to the Design and Contracting Committee, including small and disadvantaged businesses. Jacobs will conduct and participate in community meetings, PTA, Contracting Design, Professional Organization meetings, design committees, and other informational meetings, explaining the designing, construction process, layman's terms. So there is, there is a reference to it in the agreement. Granted, it's not extensive.
I agree, but there's like, not a percentage, so we don't, we don't know, or say a cert percentage of the work. I mean, that, that's my concerns. I'm talking.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Underwood.
While I appreciate Mr. Snow's concern, I'm, I'm not sure that holding Jacobs' contract is the way to go about that. I think that we can probably work it in, since we will need to approve the RFP and RFQ process. It seems that, that it might, that might be a better venue for introducing that type of language, rather than putting it in Jacobs' contract. I guess I, I would like your opinion on that.
We can implement a parallel side-by-side program with Jacobs. Jacobs did work with bonding and technical services on the last bond issue. It was a part of their contract at that time. We can also do it separately, which gives the district more control over the program. In addition, we also have visited with the city about their program. They have a, they have a program for small and disadvantaged businesses as well. We visited with the legal counsel of the city, and they've given us background information on their program, which there's a possibility of also piggybacking on that as well. So there are a number of avenues to be explored on that, and I know staff is committed to developing a program for disadvantaged business enterprises.
I have a question. I'm going to make a motion, so I turn, I'm letting Scott run this section, so I can make a motion, but part of my question is, I just feel like we don't have an overall idea. And so when we, when we approve this contract today, there'll be, part of this is incorporated as a, as a schedule. I don't know if that locks us into a schedule, if it doesn't, I know things change, I know we have to make decisions as a board regarding grade configuration. But what also concerns me is I heard Cheryl say that an audit of facilities was a shocker in other school districts and was headline. And I would hate for us to start planning on something and building things that we may not be able to maintain with our current situation. So for me, it's about an overall plan, and I can go into multiple reasons and why I'm a little concerned about this contract. I don't think there's some incentives in there for reduced costs, et cetera, but that's another more-depth conversation later on. But my biggest concern of why I can't vote for this right now is that, one of the things this board, and many of us, went out and told stakeholders, was we were going to be transparent and accountable. This contract was not posted publicly until today, and I don't think that gives the public, on a $15 million contract, almost $16 million, the opportunity to review if we vote on it tonight. It was posted at 9:00 AM this morning. I don't, I don't think that's fair, and I don't think our first act when going into a bond is to vote on a $15 million contract without giving the opportunity for public to be heard. That's just my opinion.
Mrs. Fay. So I, I can only speak for myself, obviously, but I've learned a lot here tonight from your explanation, from Cheryl's, from Katie and Matt's, in particular, about a lot of the pieces that go into, now that we're at the implementation stage of the bond. And I think I would appreciate the time, and I don't need a lot of time, but the time to sit down with Cheryl or someone from Jacobs, and maybe if you're there, Katie and Matt, if you want to come, that'd be great, to understand, I feel a little bit like today, I've been given some pieces, but I don't know where that's going, you know? I don't know what the next things that are going to come to the board are, so I can, you know, I can digest what I've been given today, but I don't know what is next. So I don't, I know you presented, you know, in your PowerPoint, sort of how it rolls out, but that was your part. I'm not sure how Emeritus plays into that, so I don't know where all the pieces are for that, because we heard some options for how the bonds are sold, and, you know, I would appreciate the opportunity to sit down and be given an overall plan of how this is going to work, and which pieces are going to come before the board win, so that I can really give an informed vote. That's what I would appreciate, and I, and I don't need a lot of time. I mean, I can, I know we have a holiday coming up, but I'm, I can, if other people are willing to sit down with me and, you know, help me figure this out, then I'll feel more comfortable about moving forward on this and all the other votes that I'm sure will be coming up.
Just a couple of things. Mr. Wayne, you mentioned the schedule. The amendment does provide that the schedule is a preliminary schedule and can be revised as we go through the project. As far as timing goes, the bond issue's approved on November 4th, and we got the agreement done, the amendment negotiated and completed, and 10 days later. It moved along pretty quick. Would like to have it sooner, but it's pretty, it was pretty complicated negotiations coming to the price, liability limitations.
Ms. Williams.
I don't, I mean, I don't particularly, I don't have an issue with the contract itself, but I do agree that if we're asking our public to, you know, get behind us on this, I mean, I'm very much, even when we talk about policies, we do have to take that time to make sure that everyone has thorough time, and I think we just, this is just one of those things, that timing really wasn't in our favor particularly, but I think if we're going to have that process, we should always have that process. If we can't get enough time for us to really thoroughly kind of dig into it, and the public as well, I think that, you know, that should be our standard, is if we don't have the time, and we don't have the, the time for the public to digest it, then we should maybe put that on hold until we all have that time to get the feedback, and to make, as Mrs. Fay said, to make an informed decision on how we're voting, especially with bond issues. I think that's very important for us moving forward.
I guess I would just ask as well, what kind of a delay does that put us into if, if we wait and don't approve this? I mean, are we, is it stopping, and then no meetings?
The situation from Jacobs' standpoint is they're gearing up for the bond issue, and of course, until they have an approved contract, they don't get paid. So that's kind of where that goes, but I'd more likely ask Cheryl to answer that question. I mean, I don't know if they're going to stop working, but it's, you know, that's, that's their choice, because right now, they don't have a contract to do any of the additional services.
I mean, yeah, we, we are gearing up and hiring people. You know, we had a new person start today, we have three people coming in next Monday.
Yeah, what Cheryl said.
Perfect, okay.
I mean, are we going to stop? No, but
Right.
we, we are at risk with, with the intended plan.
Yeah, and, and again, if this is a two-week delay, if we can sit down and get, you know, people comfortable in a relatively short order, no, we're, we're not going to stop work. If we're going to get to, you know, establishing the full policies for what the DBE requirements are, and if we're going to hold our contract until that all gets established, that could be months and months. So we, we can't, we can't wait that long.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
And I don't, I mean, I don't think anyone, we're not, there's no scare or anything here. I think it's just, I think we have the onus to make sure that we are transparent and people do have that time. I think it's more just to make sure that everyone has the time, again, to really dive into it, kind of look at it line by line. They can voice their opinions, concerns, and whatever else they possibly could, so that we can ask the questions and make sure that we're doing our due diligence as well.
Okay, and we will absolutely participate, provide whatever backup and support we can do to make that happen.
Thank you. Yeah, oh, Mr. Evans.
I guess I'd say you could probably provide some support too, for some, some opportunities for workshops, maybe individual meetings to help staff too, and if we put it on on December 1, with what I've heard, folks are still comfortable, they just want a little more time. I've not heard board members suggest they're not comfortable with it, they just want the public to see it a little bit longer, and that provides an opportunity then for some either one-on-one or two-on-one meetings to help, help explain what was pretty complex information earlier tonight. And I think-